Pro, Chair Pro Tem, Kimiyo Nakane. Happy to welcome everyone to our August meeting. We'll go through an opening pule. Obviously, our community are all reeling from the events surrounding our Maui Ohana, as well as our Hawaii Island Ohanas. Wa Manalo itself has also been impacted by community leaders departing other physical world as well recently. And so, you know, on behalf of our board and our community, we want to extend our deepest sympathies, our deepest condolences, and our mana and aloha to everyone impacted as we continue to strive through developing ways and solutions that will strengthen our lahu'i, our Hawaii for the world to see. And so at this time, you know, I would like to open the floor. If anyone would like to offer our pule for us to get us started, and then we'll go right into, yeah, bringing our meeting into order, and from there we'll get started. Any volunteers that makau ka'au to give us pule this evening? If you can just unmute yourself and identify yourself, and then go right into pule.
Ahi kia, ok pule.
Oh, ya no, mahalo ana ke.
Ahi, pule kakau. Aloha e kia kua, manalo e lakau ka'ani. Mahalo nuu e makau ya'oe. Noko malama'ana ya makau pakahi apo ma'aua'i manalo. Nui haa'a makau ya'oe. E kaukou lima'malama. Ka'apuni i ko makau ohana io i'a ne'i. Ma'keia pai'a ina. Ma'aua'i pi'i lani ke'kahi. Ke'olu'olu. E ha'avi'a lako i ke'koku'a. Ame kamana. Ame ka'olu'olu ke'kahi. Ke'olu'olu ke'kahi. No ka'na name'a pono.
Yeah, amen.
O'eana. Mahalo ya'oe. No name'a apau i ha'avi'a ya makau pakahi apo. Ake'olu'olu e malame'a makau ahi ki kaho'i'a na i kahale kia po. Mahalo no keia kaya'ulu'a Wa Manalo. Lord, thank you for everything that you provide for us. We humbly ask that you continue to surround each and every one of us, as well as our Ohana, around our aina, oh Hawaii'ine, with the guidance that we need, the support that we need, and especially those that are suffering on Maui. And at this time, the sadness that you help to provide the strength that they need to get the things they need to get done, and give them some time or pleasantness. All of these we ask māpai no'i, yesu Kristo. Kōki ki hiva hiva. Amen.
Amen. Mahalo ana ke, kapuna maderos for that, getting us started. Thank you.
Kimiyo, I just wanted to mention, and I don't know if this is the right time, but there's gonna, I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to stay on this board, and I'm gonna want to discuss it at the time that you let me know when it's appropriate. Mahalo.
Okay, mahalo nuu for that. Appreciate it. All right, gang, we're gonna go real quickly through the purpose. The purpose of the neighborhood board and the neighborhood plan is to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. We, as a neighborhood board, have agreed to the following rules of engagement. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon, and when recognized by the chair, to address the comments to the chair. A remark should not exceed three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. You can mute and unmute for those dialing in on phone by pressing star six. Please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comment or questions. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. We've also committed ourselves to functioning under the responsibility of aloha. As noted, akahi to be modest, lo'kahi to be unified, olu'olu to work with pleasantries, ha'aha'aa to be humble, and ahonui to be patient as a means of standard and conduct for all of us participating. And so, we welcome everyone to sharing that aloha as we all strive to be a better Wa Manalo. Note that the board may take action on any agenda item, but as required by the State Sunshine Law, specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, which is nine of this thirteen-member board, is needed to add an item to the agenda. Adding an item to the agenda, however, is not permitted if, one, the item that is to be added is of reasonable major importance, and, two, action on the item by the board will affect a significant number of persons. Determination of whether a specific matter may be added to an agenda must be done on a case-by-case basis. Please silence all your electronic devices, and this meeting is being recorded for those that are participating online. Please note, you can choose to keep your camera off if you so choose to. And as soon as my camera gets makau ka'au, it will be on. But we're gonna go right into our roll call. We're gonna introduce Lyndon Valenciano. Lyndon is our new neighborhood board assistant, filling in for our departed partner Akiona, who moved to a different career. And we're so excited for Partner. We wish him a wonderful time in his new role as a teacher. And we're so excited to see the changes that he will bring to the community in which he will be serving. And so, Lyndon, maybe you can introduce yourself very quickly, and then we can go into roll call.
How's it? I've been at the NCO for three, four years now, originally from Courtney. And I've been here, I moved there since I graduated high school. And then I'm gonna start with the roll call. I'll start with the people that's here. Let me start off with Mabel and Mabel.
I'm good. On Wa Manalo Neighborhood Board.
Mabel, Mabel. Present, in the ear. You're muted still.
Hey, let me get off here.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Lawrence Navas.
Here.
Lawrence, okay, cool. Kimiyo, Kimiyo Nakane.
Present.
Jamie Lee Mukuleguo.
Yo, you can also note me as Moiata.
Moiata, okay. Okay. Kidani Granberg.
Yo.
Taku'uma deros.
Yo.
And Ted Ralston. Ted here, we need Ted to get quorum. One, two, three, four, five, six. Ted, hopefully he can let us know when he gets in so that we can have quorum back.
Fantastic. Mahalo, gang. Thank you, Lyndon, for the introduction and for joining our board. We look forward to working with you tonight and hopefully into the future. Do we have any kapuna online? We have created time and space to hear the voices of our kapuna as we recognize the value and importance that they hold to our community. And so, we invite any of our kapuna, one speaker anyhow, to share with the community a thought, a memory, an expectation. Do we have any community members that are present that wishes to do so at this time? Okay, okay, okay. Hearing none, we will continue. All right, hearing none, we'll continue on with our agenda. We again invite anyone from the public at any point to join us for that conversation as we progress. So mahalo nuu. Antikapua, are you makau ka'au with an olalono'ao?
Hi. Mahalo. Just took it out. Okay. There it is. All right. Keeping in mind that I was very proud of our Wa Manalo and how they pulled together to kokua at a moment in notice. And this is the olalono'ao that comes to mind. E'ala, e'alu, ekui lima. And this means up, get up, get together quick, and join hands. It's a call to come together to tackle a given task of which Wa Manalo was very good at, in to be able to kokua our neighbors who needed our kokua. And thank you to Auntie Blanche and her hui. Thank you to Kula Nui o Wa Manalo ke'kahi, and everyone, and Kimiyo Nakana for getting all the notices out, and everyone that shared it and was able to show up to kokua. Wa Manalo showed up in a big way to kokua, and that shows that we are doing our job here at the Neighborhood Board to keep everyone connected. And so mahalo nuu. Aloha.
Mahalo, Antikapua, for the record. Ted Ralston, present at seven fourteen. Ted, can you make your voice present? Thank you, Ted. Welcome. So that does bring us to quorum now. So mahalo nuu, everyone, for making time to be here. We're gonna progress to our emergency providers and public agency reports, starting with Honolulu Fire Department. Aloha.
Good evening. My name is Captain Eb'ee, Wa Manalo Fire Station. I'm gonna read the statistics. We had zero structured fires, one wild and brush fire, zero nuisance or cooking fires, and one activated alarm. We had thirty-nine medical emergencies, zero motor vehicle collisions with a pedestrian, involving a pedestrian, motor vehicle crashes and collisions, we had three, mountain rescues, we had one, ocean rescues, we had one, hazardous material incidents, we had zero. Our fire safety tip and announcements for the month of July, I guess, August now, is fire and fall prevention. Help ensure the safety of our esteemed elders. Implementing prevention and preparedness practices will promote independence and reduce frequency of injury or death from home fires and falls. Learn more at fire.honolulu.gov backslash fire hyphen and life hyphen safety backslash kapuna. Sorry. That was a lot. A couple more things are stay in the kitchen when frying food and cooking on the stove top, keep a lid nearby. If a pan of food catches fire, slide the lid over it and turn off the burner. Remember, the stove top and the oven are not to be used for storage. Ensure working smoking alarms, excuse me, smoke alarms are installed properly. Bed shaker and strobe alarms are available for hearing or visually impaired occupants. Plan your escape from fire based on your abilities. Keep your exit routes clear. Ensure windows and doors open easily, and practice your escape plan. When the alarm sounds, get outside and stay outside. Call 911 from your safe meeting place using a mobile phone. If you're unable to evacuate, shelter in place, stay near a window, and call 911. Exercise regularly to build strength and improve coordination and balance. Ask a doctor about appropriate physical exercises. Be aware of your surroundings, including uneven surfaces. Take your time when getting out of a chair or bed. Stand and get your balance before you begin to walk. Two more, gang, sorry. Keep walking areas, pathways, and stairways, stairs well lit and clear of tripping hazards. Wear sturdy, well-fitting footwear and utilize handrails. Review your medications with your doctor. Keep an updated list of medications, medical directives, and emergency contacts posted on your refrigerator. That was the last one. And that was a pretty important one. A lot of times, older folks, they don't really remember what they're taking. So if you write it, if you write it down, and you can hand it to the fireman or the EMS, that would be very helpful. Thank you. Any questions on that or incidents?
Captain, thank you so very much for the update. Members, any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Anyone from the public?
Chair, I have a question. This Ted.
Ted Ralston, please, go ahead.
Captain, thank you very much for that comprehensive review. Obviously, circumstances on other islands right now are probably asking, making us all think differently about what we might experience in the future. Wa Manalo, we have one road in, one road out, and it would be easily overtaken by events should we have something like what's taking place in Maui. We have two sources of ignition. We have the wires coming over the ko'olau from Haua'i Kai side coming down, or Pa'ola side, which one wonders, you know, what the design parameters are for that system. And then we have the, a lot of campfires on the beach periodically, which do go pretty large sometimes. And the beach lots would be, go pretty quick, and then that would go into the homestead and such. Anyway, just an observation is that I don't think anybody ever thought Maui would face what it faced, and we don't think we're gonna face that here, but you never know. So I just wonder, is anybody sort of cognizant and aware of the fireworks too? Absolutely, fireworks all over the place. Does anybody think about that at a, is that the fire department situation, or is that Department of Emergency Management? Just where does that type of consideration occur? Just an open question. I don't think you have the answer. I just wanted to get the question started. Thank you, sir.
The only thing I could bring up is that obviously, the things that are happening on Maui and the Big Island as well are bringing everything to the forefront. I don't know, I don't know if you've been watching the news, but central Oahu has been burning as well. So luckily for us, we're a larger island, a larger department. But I think the powers that be above me, my bosses, are definitely having to rethink some things. And I don't want to make any judgments here or there, but they're definitely thinking right now. They're all getting together. A bunch of the, a bunch of the higher-ups went up to, went out to Maui and went investigated on their own, and I definitely think there, it's in the forefront of everyone's mind right now. Sorry if that's a vague answer.
Thank you, Ted. Captain, thank you so very much for that response. Please send our best wishes. We know that the Maui Fire Department, there's been some members impacted by the fire, and so we definitely want to support it. And to all of our Oahu Honolulu Fire Department members that are traveling, please be safe. And we just mahalo you folks for your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Members, we're gonna move over to the Honolulu Police Department at this time. Officer Atkins, thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm Officer Ted Atkins with the District Four Community Policing Team. The stats for Wa Manalo for the month of July, there were zero motor vehicle thefts versus zero the previous month. There was one burglary in July versus three the previous month. There were two thefts versus eleven the previous month. There were four car break-ins versus four the previous month. And there were zero robberies in July versus zero the previous month. And then I also have the stats from last year, July. So the motor vehicle thefts, there was actually two more last year. There was zero burglaries last year versus one burglary this year. There were thirteen thefts last year versus only two this year. And there were ten car break-ins last year versus four this year. And then I also have an announcement that we will be, we are planning a stored property ordinance operation at Wa Manalo Beach Park sometime in September or October, depending on the availability of other agencies. We don't have a date for that yet, but we are planning on doing that at Wa Manalo Beach Park sometime in the future. And I can take any questions or concerns anybody has?
Mahalo, Officer Atkins, thank you for being here. Members, any questions for HPD? Antikapua?
Kalamai.
Followed by Kidani Granberg.
Kalamai. Well, what, what, mahalo, Officer Atkins for being here. What was that last part about a stored property?
A stored property ordinance operation. So it's, we're gonna go, so what we do is we go out and offer outreach to people at the beach park, and then we'll give them a twenty-four hour notice that we're coming, and then we'll come and clean up all the garbage and any illegal tents that are there and all that stuff.
Oh, okay. Not stored, not storing HPD's property there.
No.
Yeah, I'm not hearing it right. Okay, okay, mahalo.
Mahalo, Antikapua, Kidani Granberg, followed by Auntie Mabel.
Aloha. Thank you for being here. I just had a question. Did, do you guys give reports on noise complaint? Like how much you guys got last month?
No, I don't have those stats. I can try and look them up. Are you looking for some specific?
Oh, no, it was just that some of your officers showed up to my house for a noise complaint during broad daylight, so I was kind of just wondering.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
That's okay. All right, thank you.
I can look it up for you if you want. I'll put my email in the chat, just shoot me an email, I'll find out what's going on.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Mahalo, Kidani, Auntie Mabel.
Aloha, officer. I wanted to talk about just the attitude of the Wa Manalo Beach Park Ohana. I heard that there was a serious, you know, destruction of a tourist automobile a couple days ago. And the reason I ask you that is because this past weekend, I had so many, I was enlightened. I have no idea what goes on across the Wa Manalo Beach Park. And several of the residents pulled me on the side and was telling me that, number one, there's a lot of illegal activities, a lot of chop shops underneath the tents, that the tent is standing, but underneath there are disbanding, you know, mopeds or whatever. And then, secondly, they were also telling me that when the officers respond, they've been mistreated and pushed around, you know, and that's really alarming for me. And the third thing was that, what's the third thing? Anyway, with three things, that, that, that. Anyway, I was telling them that enough is enough. Oh, the theft, the theft that was going on across with the neighbors, you know, and I'm sorry, but I had to be enlightened. I did not know that this been happening for a long while. And so when it came to my attention, I immediately was very troubled by it, and I wanted to find out if that's true.
Yes, so that, that is accurate. There does appear to be like a chop shop in one of the tents. We were there less than two weeks ago, and we had, we took a stolen motorcycle out of there and arrested a male for a warrant. And as we were there, what appeared to be a stolen motorcycle, a male pulled up on a second possibly stolen motorcycle. He didn't realize we were there. When he did realize he was there, he dug out. So I don't know if it was stolen or not, but didn't have a license plate, and due to his actions, you know, it's kind of from experience that think that was another stolen bicycle, or motorcycle. And in that tent, yes, it did look like a chop shop. And then, yes, that is also correct. Officers have been experienced, I guess, increased violence towards them, or threat of violence towards them when they go there. You know, there's been some criminal activity that officers go and respond to, and when they go there to address the criminal activity, they are met hostilely. Yes, that is true. And yeah, that seems to be a place where stolen items often pinged to recently. You know, stolen stuff is being located there by GPS. So yeah, I would say that's fairly accurate, what you're hearing.
I want to thank you for responding. Mahalo.
Yeah, no problem.
Mahalo, Auntie Mabel. Any other members, questions for HPD? Anyone from the public? Okay, Officer Atkins, I have a follow-up question if I may. Can you clarify what is the difference between a sweep and a stored property operation?
So the stored property ordinance operation is common, it's what everyone refers to as a sweep. We're not actually, you know, sweeping, rounding up the people what people think of as our sweep. So what we do is, so usually we'll plan it, whenever we plan it, we'll try to go out like maybe five days or a week in advance, right? We'll go out and we'll go out with, so for now, for instance, we'll go with IHS, we'll go with the Wa Manalo Health Center. In this case, because it's also state property, we'll probably go with the state homeless agencies, and we'll go to every single tent, we'll offer outreach, you know, try and find them shelter if they want it, whatever services they're willing to accept, or whatever we can help them with, that's what we're trying to help them with. We do it for as many days as needed. If it's needed more than one day, we'll continue to do it. And then at the same time, we'll already know the date that we're coming, so we're gonna tell them, hey, you know, this is happening in a week, so you know, you need to start making arrangements and stuff like that. And then come twenty-four hours prior to that operation, we're required to give them a warning, and if they're not at their tent, we'll post it on their tent, but it has to be twenty-four hours. And then once the twenty-four hours passes, then we come in and we'll come, we'll come, you know, and the different agencies that are responsible come in and take down the tents and stuff. And of course, if people are still there, we give them some time to take what their personal belongings. But of course, you know, they've had enough time, so we're not gonna let them take their tent and stuff like that. And so that's what that entails. That's, that's what everyone refers to as a sweep. Sometimes in these sweeps, people are arrested, you know, if they have large warrants or they're wanted for crimes and stuff like that. So that, that can, that's kind of what people say are getting swept up, but we're not, we're not there to arrest people, you know, that are, that are homeless. We're just there to kind of, you know, clean up all the stuff that's left behind.
Mahalo for the clarification. Can you tell me, what is the expectation afterwards in terms of timeframe? Will HPD be managing the continued presence there and clearing as they go there?
Yes, we try to keep follow-up, right? We don't want to just do this and then, you know, it just reoccurs the next day. So we do try to follow up on it. Sometimes we're not successful. I mean, if you look at Sherwood's, you know, the, sometimes we're able to, you know, keep it clean for a while, and then obviously, like right now, it's, you know, it hasn't been very successful. It usually come back the next day or so. But yes, we do try and do follow-up to, you know, keep it clear, keep every, everything in, within the law.
And will this, Officer Atkins, continue down our coastline? These people that choose not to move into housing, as we know, will move somewhere else. So is, is the effort going to continue across all of Wa Manalo's landscapes?
We currently don't have any plans for it to. It just basically depends on, you know, the, whatever activity is occurring and the complaints and stuff like that. But we don't have any, we don't have anything planned that we would move, that we're gonna do it anywhere else right now.
Understood. I appreciate the attention to taking care of, you know, the illegal activities and obviously those that are creating dangerous spaces. I will remind HPD that this body advocated against sweeps, and that's been public for some years now. So we definitely want to be informed and want to be a part of the solution creating as we work through this. What we don't want to see, as we've seen in the past, as I mentioned, is that this just moves the problem somewhere else, and then we continue to just do this. So if there's a different approach that HPD is taking with all of these partners, we certainly welcome it. Auntie Mabel is the chair of our residentially challenged committee. Should we decide to be able to recreate that, we, we need this activity and conversation to be active in our conversations at the board. It's unfortunate that, you know, we have circumstances that just pop up like tonight. Given the circumstance of safety and public safety at that, I think it's important to recognize, we just don't want this to become the pushover solution that we've known our community to face over the years. So I appreciate your honesty in tonight's conversation, and we look forward to hopefully having a more rich conversation in our committees to talk about what real solutions will look like in the future. So thank you so much, Officer Atkins. Rich conversation in in our committees to talk about what real solutions will look like in the future. So thank you so much, Officer Atkins, for being here. Uh, and being a part of the solutions in our community.
Absolutely. And I'll, if um we can come and join your other committees meetings as well uh to keep you guys informed. Cause we we absolutely know that, yeah, it's it doesn't, you know, we take away their stuff, it doesn't solve them. They gotta, they gotta go somewhere, right? They're not just gonna disappear off the face of the earth. So um we do wanna work with the community. We're we're gonna try and work with Auntie Blanch and Weinberg as well. We're gonna reach out to them so we so we can find some solutions. I know the biggest problem usually is people don't wanna leave the windward side, right? So we're gonna try and reach out to all the areas on the windward side and. You know, hopefully get people some some homes instead of, you know, living in tents on the beach.
Absolutely. Can you repeat again what was the timeline we were looking at?
So we're looking at some uh definitely in September or maybe even October. Not definitely September, but sometime late September or October. It just depends on um. When DOT is available and we're probably gonna have DFM as well um with us, so. We 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 still gotta reach out to those agencies and see what their timeline is looking like.
Fantastic. I think following that, if it's gonna be in October, would the neighborhood board be privy to a report on what actions were taken?
Yes, absolutely. We we can report on what what actions are taken.
Fantastic. Mahalo, Nui Officer. Thank you so much and continue to be safe.
Thank you.
Mahalo. Members, we're gonna move on. We have Board of Water Supply, Dani. Thank you, Dani, for your patience.
Hi, good evening. It's Danielle Nellis, the Board of Water Supply. And the message from the board this month, um now through November, we are in. Um, uh, I'm sorry, hurricane season. And being prepared and having emergency kit is essential. The board asks that all residents should have at least one gallon of water per person. Per day for fourteen days storage and not to forget your pets. Also, um during emergencies, stay tuned um via media. And to subscribe to the city's H and L dot info um app to receive. Bu- bulletins from Board of Water and other um emergency city agencies. And then I had a response um from last month's questions. So the question was, um, where is the water that feeds Ola Mana Golf Course come from? And is there high usage? And the response I got from the um Communication Office, so the water comes from various wells, including Wa Manalo Tunnel. Punalu Wells, Waheia Tunnel. And according to the records, the water usage at Ola Mana Golf Course has been decreasing since twenty twelve. Um, the water usage there is less than um uh similar sized golf courses. Um, that use only potable water. And then there was a comment about fire ants. And yes, um, the participants at the. The plant sale that we had um last weekend, um they all checked for fire ants when bringing in their pots and plants, excuse me. And then we did have a onsite. Um, expert there at the garden. Not sure if anyone made it there, but um. Okay, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Dani, mahalo Nui for uh the update. Members, any questions for Board of Water Supply? All right, seeing none. Anyone from the public? All right, seeing none. All right, Dani, you know, as we come into these events, obviously natural disasters, it's very difficult for some. To plan for. What what does the Board of Water Supply do? Like, what is the processes that the Board of Water Supply does in terms of preparing? For a natural disaster. And and you don't have to express that tonight, but I think. What's called into question in the public recently is is equals actions or potentially non-action. And so I'm curious if, you know, all of our providers have. Have some type of processes that they function. I I'm assuming so. Um, and I'm just curious what that might look like and if the public has access to kind of what that looks like. You know, you mentioned in your briefing when there are emergencies to tune in and I literally just. Heard the newscast that said, you know, how do you, how do you have a community that's going through a raging fire? And and have that as the only option to tune in, you know, where where everything around them is is changed. And so. I know that the state and the county is really reviewing those things, but. Is Board of Water Supply also in the process of reviewing their meta- uh their natural disaster processes?
You know, after something like this, I'm I'm, it's got, they've got to be, you know, everyone's gotta be on alert and updating and and. Um, very proactive. I do know that hurricane season, when expected high weather, um. Bad weather, et cetera. I do know that um the water wells are pumped to capacity. Um, all the vehicles are, you know, filled with gas. We have standby crews. Um, there is a protocol. Um, I worked for many, many years in the field and the field ops guys are are very on top of. You know, uh expect, you know, expecting the worst. Um, but I can get you more notes on that and more um. Details on what goes on to be in in being prepared.
Yeah, I I just think about our water infrastructure and know and recognize that in Wa Manalo, we have a lot of eating, you know, very um old. Infrastructure and I mean, I can't imagine what. What life would be if those things started to just fail, you know, and and the community just becomes inundated by floodwater. You know, and I I'm just thinking all these things now as much as as is everyone else. And and we just mahalo you guys for being on top of that. And we look forward to learning more with what um you folks offer the communities in terms of preparedness and safety. So thank you so much for for taking that question.
You're welcome.
Mahalo, Dani. We'll see you next month. Hopefully, take care.
Thank you. Take care.
Members, we're moving on. Mayor Blangiardi's representative, Director Laura Thielen. Director, the time is yours.
Uh, thank you, board members. Um, I wasn't able to get my printer to work, so I'm gonna have to read the report on the screen. And then I can come back and uh look you in the eye. Um, but also for Officer Atkins. Um, you know, and I when with the Parks Department and we will uh certainly partner with you. And assist with the stored property ordinance, um and also the connection with the other agencies. Um, so we'd like to to help with that. And so thank you very much. For the mayor's report, um, a couple of general announcements before I get to the questions that people had asked last month. So uh first a key hire, as you guys may know, the um, the woman who is the head of the Department of Facility Maintenance had. Um, left for another job, but she's helping with the transition to a new director. And so the mayor's appointed Jean Albano and he was just confirmed by the city council. To be the director for the Department of Facility Maintenance. And he's an electrical engineer, which we love at the Parks Department because we rely on DFM to do our electrical work. We have all the trades except electricians and DPR. So it's nice that uh he's in there now and Dawn is helping him with the transition, which will be very good. Um, and then, let's see here, we we have um additional FRF recovery money going out. To help with the rental and utility relief program. So twenty-five million in recovery funds are going out and I think six hundred Awahu families apply for. Short-term rent and utility relief help at the various events that we've had. So altogether, the city's helped about eighteen thousand families stay, say, uh safely housed during and after the pandemic. Um, some laws have passed and I think Councilwoman Kiaina can talk about that more when she's up. About the uh real property tax relief. And so part of that is um. They have increased the exemption for homeowners age sixty-five and older from first two categories. And then there's also uh more people may be eligible for the uh real property tax credit program and relief. Based on their income. So people can contact uh for more information from the Real Property Tax Relief Office. At eight oh eight seven six eight three two zero five. And you can also email taxrelief@Honolulu.gov and get some more information about. Whether you're eligible for the uh property tax credits. Um. Let's see here, then there was some questions about the uh projects for the at Wa Manalo District Park. For the gym roof and then the multi-purpose building storm hardening. So first for the gym roof, the construction con- contract was executed on June thirtieth. Um, when they do start construction and it's supposed to be within three months after June thirtieth. We'd asked them not to start until we had the multi-purpose building open. Uh, so we're trying to work with the contractor on that. But once they closed the gym to the public, we did put a time limit that it uh the work should be done within a hundred and eighty calendar days. Or sooner, um so that it wouldn't be closed longer than that for them to fix the the leaky in the roof. The um multi-purpose storm hardening, they are expecting that to be completed by the end of September twenty twenty-three. So we are hopeful that we don't have both buildings closed at the same time. Um, that the multi-purpose building will open up either before or very quickly after the gym building starts. We are looking at trying to expand some of the programs at the Kailua District Park Gym. To offset the loss of the Wa Manalo District Park Gym. And our uh fall programs will be listed online um starting next week, August twenty-first. Uh, and we have notified DDC of the board's request to have timelines regularly shared with them on the projects. And we'll keep a standing question on this uh uh memo that goes out each month to all the different departments. Um, on the pavilion project, we did confirm with the Department of Design and Construction. That the design contract for the pavilion has been amended. And so they are including design for replacing the comfort station by the campground. And also either upgrading or replacing the comfort station next to the pavilion, cause that's probably on its last legs as well. We are looking at a prefabricated type of design for the comfort station. Uh, next to the campgrounds and if the pavilion one needs to be replaced, uh the same thing. The new kinds of designs for comfort stations, the the prefabricated ones, they have um. Fixtures are built into the wall, so the plumbing for the fixture is behind. A wall in a secured area that our plumbers can get to, but it's not open to the general public. We have a lot of problems with vandalism where the pipes under the sink. Uh, are are broken so that people can fill buckets just by, you know, filling up the sink and it just drops straight down to the ground. And other issues. And so they're they're designed to be vandal resistant. Um, and since that's a huge part of why a lot of our comfort stations are temporarily closed. Um, we're taking a look at that type of design. When we get some designs, we can share those with the board members. Um, but it's something that would be have to be put out to bid and there's multiple companies that do this type of design. And we're hoping that that's gonna help the bathroom stay uh workable and open to the public more. And this would be the the first time that we'd be doing that in um the beach park area. Uh, we had some requests on the fencing from Board Member Maderos about the fencing around Hunananiho being cut. And the staff uh is aware of that. We do have a fencing contract now. We've been making quick repairs in-house. And we'll continue to monitor the situation. Um, and so please keep reporting damage to us and also to HPD. And then we can continue to follow up and where we do need to do replacement, we can work with the contractor on that. Um, and then there was also questions about the coconut rhinoceros beetle and little fire ants. Councilwoman Kiaina asked me to come to the meeting next week uh in the community about the invasive species on behalf of the. The mayor and the city administration, which I'll do. And then also our Division of Urban Forestry. Is um continuing to work with the Department of Agriculture and the University of Hawaii on the coconut rhinoceros beetle response. And to take a look at uh what we need to be doing to be saving kind of the iconic coconut trees in in certain areas. And hopefully the University of Hawaii is gonna be able to come up with some type of um. Better treatment because the current treatment is fairly time extensive and expensive. It's um, as they described it to me, it's almost like a tree getting chemotherapy. Where you have to put needles into the tree. For a coconut tree, it may be one. I guess the vascular system for trees varies. For other trees, it may be multiple, you know, points where you're entering this stuff and it's a drip that goes into the tree. And so it needs to be monitored. You can only do so many trees in a vicinity and you have to have a staff person there. So people don't pull out the needle and accidentally, you know, injure themselves with the the substance. So we're taking a look at that, but also University of Hawaii is trying to find whether there could be certain um. I guess more efficient methods or organic methods for treatment for coconut rhinoceros beetle because it is gonna be um really impactful. For the island. And then they do like other palm trees as well. You know, the coconut tree may be like its version of the potato chip. But eventually it goes to the other stuff. So we're expecting a long-term response to this and. We will definitely be coordinating with other agencies. Um, and that said, I'd be happy to take any uh questions or comments back.
Director, thank you so much for making the time to cover all of those information. We have a hand up. Auntie Mabel?
Aloha, Director. I just wanted to follow up on something that might have been resolved already. But for the Azavito Park, I remember we were doing um a small little case study to see if um. That it would be able to be restored, our last try to try to restore Azavito Field. Um, did it end up a success? Cause I know we cut out small little ten-foot pieces and tried to. Um, come up with a solution, you know, for that field. But did it, did it fail? And we have no solution, so we cannot really use the field at all?
Well, no, so if you remember, we brought uh Peter Yamashita out and he is the head of our maintenance support services and the former. He was a groundskeeper for a number of golf courses and then came up through the um worked at the city afterwards. So according to him, a lot of the cracks were because that field is is very uh clay. If you let it dry out, it will shrink and crack. And so the secret to minimizing the cracks is to keep it moist. Down to a certain level. So we uh did not restrict the irrigation on that field when we were reducing irrigation for Board of Water Supply. And he's trained the groundskeepers on the irrigation there and then also cutting the grass. Uh, we want the grass clippings to stay on the field because that provides nitrogen and nutrients for it. Our mowing crew can cut um every other week at most if if the equipment is all working. Um, because they're having to do such a wide range. So if there are community volunteers who want to cut alternate weeks. And maybe just focus on the playing field areas and not the periphery, um that would be fine. We also extended the irrigation to make sure that we were covering um the full area. So I think it's been successful. It may not be perfect, but it's certainly improved. And if there are people who wanna volunteer. On uh mowing, um please reach out to me and let me know and we'd be happy to work you into a a schedule with our crew.
Mahalo, Director. Thank you.
Mahalo, Auntie Mabel. Any other members? Questions for Parks and Rec? Uh, excuse me, questions for the mayor of the office, the office of the mayor? Ted?
No, mine is actually related to the uh, the discussion on the Pa Hinui Pavilion, which will be, which will come up under uh. Uh, Director Thielen's other report, right on the the park side.
Um, this is the report from the city, so if you have a question specific to that, I would recommend asking it here.
I'll do it now then. Okay, the that at the meeting at the gym regarding the Pa Hinui Pavilion replacement, there was a lot of uh feedback. And um I'm wondering what, it was all written. We had oral feedback, but then everybody submitted handwritten notes. And that was a couple of months ago. And I wonder if there's gonna be a feedback session or some way that we'll hear what uh. What the what the designers are thinking about in regard to the comments that came back from the Wa Manalo community.
Let me go back to uh the comments that we got from DDC. So my understanding is because this is in the special management area, under the permit, they're required to include a number of community meetings. Um, so they are going to incorporate these comments that they received into the design. And then do a presentation that says that the Wa Manalo Neighborhood Board uh tentatively in December. So the the. So the the planning firm, which is Planning Solutions. Um, and then also Jeffrey Nishi, Nishi and Associates is the architect. But Planning Solutions is the contractor doing the planning for the DDC project. Um, should be reaching out to the Waianalo Neighborhood Board about a presentation.
Okay, well, that's good. And then uh, we'll have to see if they, you know, what they actually did with the comments, because there's no requirement to do anything with them other than receive them. And so that would be the interesting uh, feedback. I think a lot of people volunteered to generate uh, specific comments and such. And so that's what I was hoping we would be able to hear from them, some kind of a just another, before we have a presentation of the board, we ought to have another, an an actual conversation, conversation with with that bunch. It would be my view.
Okay, I can make the recommendation to um, DDC that at a minimum, they get something to you folks in writing prior to the Neighborhood Board meeting if and and best would be to have a um, uh, more of a conversation.
Yeah, we do it on site. That'd be perfect.
Mahalo, Ted. Any other questions for the Mayor's Office? All right, anyone from the public? All right, I'm seeing none. Director Sealan, can you just clarify for me, where does the um, special management area end? Is that end at uh, Colony Anoole?
I don't know. I'd have to take a look at a map because of, you know, it's going to vary around the island, but it tends to include the immediate coastal area. I don't know if it goes farther inland than the highway.
So that would put majority of the the beach-facing homes in the beach lots in a special management area as well, correct?
I'm not sure again whether, well, yeah, I I don't know how far in inland the area goes. And and it may vary in its uh, depth from the ocean in.
Why would it vary in the depth? Do you know?
No, but I just know it may not just be a straight line around the island, you know, in five hundred feet or something. And some areas, it may include further inland for various reasons, but um, I'd have to go back and take a look at the map and I can see if we can get a copy of the map for you for Waianalo.
Yeah, I'd be very interested to see and and what powers that be determine those particular lines? That I I'm curious about that. So I I would be welcoming of a map and and see what that might look like. And I'd welcome it into our Community Plan Committee uh, for review.
I'm I'm gonna listen to more of the board stuff, so I'll see if I can find it online. And if I can, I'll put it into the notes.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for that. Uh, Director Sealan, have a wonderful rest of your evening. Mahalo. All right, members, we are going to move into some board business. We need to fill six vacancies at this time. Uh, with potentially welcoming one leaving us this evening. Uh, we have an at-large vacancy at this time. Do we have any nominees for an at-large position? Okay, I'm hearing none. We have a vacancy in Sub District Four, Banyan, oh, Banyan Tree. Do we have anyone for that position? Okay, I'm seeing none. We'll move into the Waianalo Village area, one vacancy in Sub District, Sub District Five. Do we have anyone there?
Um, this is Kapua. I would like to nominate.
Auntie Kapua? Yeah, you're you're unmuted now. I'm sorry. Did you want to nominate someone for?
I do. I want to nominate Brenda to get back on as the um, Banyan Tree um, representative.
Okay, Banyan Tree, we have Brenda, Auntie Brenda Wong. Mahalo, are there any other nominees for Sub District Four, Banyan Tree? Okay, hearing none. Auntie Brenda, would you like to share a little bit about your interests and your history with Waianalo? I know we've heard that in the past, but you can update the group real quickly and then uh, Lyndon, from there, do we want to do each one independently?
I'm doing each one individually.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on each uh, sub-district independently, right?
Correct.
Okay. Auntie Brenda, you can unmute. Share just a quick update on your interest in Waianalo.
Yeah, I've been living in Waianalo for the last eighteen years and um, I do love this community. I was one of the resties at Hunananiho, um, cause I believe in um, keeping our history for um, the kupuna that are there and uh, and the whole um, community. The K K F volunteered at Hope Elementary and um, our church. So I was on the board previously and I made a mistake. I didn't really know that I needed to put myself up for election, so I wasn't really aware of that. So then I got myself, I'm willing, I'm willing to come back on if that's a good thing.
Mahalo. Thank you so much for sharing that. Are there any other nominees from Banyan Tree? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Lyndon, do you need to do uh, confirmation of address? She was our previous member in that position.
Uh, I do need to confirm your address. Um, if you could send me a photo of your ID at my email.
Sure, I could do that.
And then since you was on the board previously, um, we can go ahead and just do a vote and then just send it to me and then I can verify that.
Okay, members, we are taking a vote. In this particular votes, we ask that you share the name of the person you are voting for to fill the seat in the Sub District Four for Banyan Tree. When Lyndon calls your name, please go ahead and respond with the name of the individual that you wish to fill that seat. Mahalo, members.
I'll be conducting a vote, Mabel.
I would like to support Brenda Wong in securing her position here on the board.
Awesome. Thank you, Loris.
Lord of Milan, I would like to support Brenda Wong.
Thank you, uh, Moata.
I'll vote for Brenda Wong.
Uh, Ted?
Brenda Wong.
Kenani?
Brenda Wong.
Kapua?
Brenda Wong.
Uh, Kimiona?
Brenda Wong.
Looks like sufficient for seven.
Correct.
And then I'll swear them all in after.
Sounds good. Yeah. All right, mahalo, Auntie Brenda. Thank you so much. We look forward for your service. We'll continue on, members. We're moving on to Sub District Five, Waianalo Village. Any recommendations or nominees? Okay, I'm seeing none. We're moving on to Sub District Eight, the New Homesteads. Any nominees for the New Homesteads? And to be clear, this is the New Homesteads behind the kupuna housing. We might need to, we might need to relabel that one, Lyndon. Okay, I'm hearing none. Uh, do we have any interest in Sub District Nine? This is the Old Homesteads and Beach Homes towards Makapu. Any nominees? Okay, I'm hearing none. Then our last one is Sub District Ten, Farm Lots. Any nominees?
This is Lord of Milan. I would like to nominate Zoltan Verlik.
Thank you. Zoltan and the last name?
Rudolik, sorry.
No problem. Can you put it in the chat? So we have Zoltan as an option. Do we have any other nominees for Sub District Ten Farm Lots? Seeing and hearing none. Mrs. Zoltan, thank you for joining us this evening. Would you like to share a real quick update on on your interest in Waianalo?
Okay, I moved to Hawaii fifty-three years ago. The first place I lived was Waianalo. Uh, moved to Manoa and then back to Waianalo about twenty years ago. Um, I'd like to see some things change a little bit in Waianalo. Um, concentrate more on the native peoples. Uh, I'd also would like to see some additional businesses come to Waianalo to support the community. Um, I love the place. Uh, I don't know what else I can tell you.
Fantastic. We look forward to learning with you, Mrs. Zoltan. Thank you.
By the way, I live on Makakalo Street, if anybody's interested.
Mahalo, you're going to get an email or are you going to need to send a, oh, no. Lyndon, do you need information from him as well? You got it already, yeah?
Uh, we've already verified him.
Okay, perfect. Members, we're going to be taking a vote uh, for Sub District Ten Farm Lots to welcome Mr. Zoltan. I'm gonna say your name wrong again. I'm so sorry. Rudolik's.
Just call me Zoltan.
Thank you. Into the Waianalo Neighborhood Board.
Thank you.
When your name is called, members, please uh, share your vote by name. Thank you. Lyndon?
Uh, Mabel?
Uh, Zoltan has my support.
Loris?
Thank you.
Lulu?
Sorry, yes, I I support Zoltan.
Thank you. Uh, Moata?
I support Zoltan.
Uh, Ted?
Bravo, Zoltan.
Kenani?
Zoltan.
Uh, Kapua?
Zoltan. Mahalo.
Kapua? Uh, Kimiona?
Perfect. Zoltan. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Support.
Members, that brings us to uh, the old office. It's going to be administered by Lyndon, so we'll turn the time over to Lyndon. Thank you.
Okay, if you want to raise your right hand, both uh, Brenda and Zoltan, and repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I faithfully support the Constitution.
That I faithfully support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws.
Of the United States of America.
Constitution and the laws of the state of Hawaii.
Constitution and state of Hawaii.
The charter and the laws of the city and county of Honolulu.
The charter and the laws of the city and county of Honolulu.
Charter and the laws of state of Hawaii, county of Honolulu.
And the provisions of the Neighborhood Plan.
And the provisions of the Neighborhood Board.
And uh, I'm sorry, say that again, please.
And the provisions of the Neighborhood Plan.
And the provision of Neighborhood Plan.
Neighborhood Plan.
And and will conscientiously.
And will consciously.
And partially discharge my duties.
And discharge, consciously discharge my duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As a member of the Neighborhood Board.
As a member of the Neighborhood Board.
Neighborhood Board.
To which I have been appointed.
Of which.
To which I have been appointed.
Thank you. Welcome to the board and welcome back, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
I'll be sending in, um, if you guys could send me an email so I can send you guys some forms for you to fill out. And I'll be also contacting the board members who has not filled out their information yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mahalo, Nui. Thank you, Zoltan and Brenda, for taking uh, the initiative to rejoin the board in in your case, Brenda and Zoltan, for finding interest in uh, participating in the conversations. We look forward to putting you to work. So mahalo.
Thank you. Great.
Um, I know at this time, Auntie Kapua, you had made mention of your request to depart and resign from the board. So you want to share that and then we can um, make sure that we agendize that for next. But I'll turn the time over to you for that announcement.
Um, I regretfully um, would like to announce that I cannot handle the kuliana that I have been carrying. Um, and um, recently my mom's um, dementia has just spiked and it's been really rough because she needs twenty-four-seven supervision. It's really rough on me um, to get every. All I can do is attend these monthly meetings, uh, be here to.
Okay, I I think we might have froze, but uh, we mahalo you deeply, Auntie Kapua, for your service to our community and to this board and to the various.
So much. And I love Waianalo so much and I really um, want to continue the work that we were doing. Um, I'm so proud of all the other members that have been putting in such awesome work. And um, I really love being a part of this team. But like I said, I cannot carry the kuliana and fulfill it. And and I would not like to um, stand in the way of the progress that we make. So this is where I stand. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Nui. Thank you so much for um, for sharing, for your work. Uh, and as always, we wish you and Mama all the best. Uh, and if the community stands ready to serve as well. So mahalo, Nui, for everything. Thank you.
And Auntie Kapua, could you send me an email about your resignation? Thank you.
All right. So that leaves uh, the at-large seat. We have still to fill the vacancy at Sub District Five, Waianalo Village, Sub District Eight, New Homesteads. And the Sub District Nine, Old Homesteads, uh, available uh, for those in the public that wish to serve in those capacities. We welcome you to choose to do so. Uh, to participate in the conversations and to provide solutions and opportunities for uh, Waianalo now and forevermore. Mahalo, Nui, everyone. We do have some initial convening business actions. We do need to elect our officers. The officers to be elected are the Chair, the Vice Chair, a Secretary, and previously we had a Treasurer. I don't know that we still need a Treasurer. Um, but Lyndon, you can correct me if I'm wrong there.
Technically, the Treasurer is is not really needed, but it's it's in the plan, so it doesn't hurt to have one even though there's no duty currently for them.
Okay, understood. So we will also elect a Treasurer and any other officers determined to be needed to conduct the board's business from Saturday, July first, twenty twenty-three to Sunday, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, members, we're going to take each one of these at a time. We're looking for a recommendation for the position of Chair. Any nominees for Chair? Lulu, your hand is up.
I nominate Kimiona Kane for Chair.
Mahalo, are there any other nominees?
I second.
Mahalo. We don't need all of that, but mahalo.
I call for the vote.
Okay, hold on.
I second for the vote.
Are there any other nominees for the position of Chair? Okay, hearing none. Lyndon, would you like to just do, how would you like to convey that, that vote?
Yes, so we'll have, we'll have to do it like how we do the um, the vacant seat. I'll call up your name and then you state the name of the person that you want to build the uh, position. Um, you can also vote to have his name.
Mahalo. Members, when your name is called, uh, please select the name of the individual you wish to fill the seat of Chair for the Neighborhood Board. Mahalo.
So then uh, Kimiona Kane for Chair. Let me start off with Mabel. Can't hear you.
Unmute, Auntie Mabel.
It's my pleasure to support Kimiona as the Chair.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, Loris?
I strongly support Kimiona Kane for Chair.
Thank you, Moata.
I very much support Kimiona Kane as Chair of this board.
Thank you, Ted. Uh, Kenani?
Kimiona Kane.
And then Kapua, you're um, you're gonna resign after this meeting or you're already gonna resign?
Um, I will, I'll, I will continue tonight, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, Kapua, Auntie Kapua.
Kimiona Kane. Mahalo.
Thank you. Um, Brenda? Brenda still here?
Brenda Wong?
Please support Kimiana Kani for Chair of the Board.
Thank you, Zen Zoltan.
Mr. Kani.
And then Kimiana Kani.
It would be my privilege to continue to serve as Chair for the Neighborhood Board. Mahalo.
Thank you. Congratulations as Chair again.
Mahalo, members. We are gonna move on to the position of Vice Chair. Any nominees for the position of Vice Chair? Okay, any volunteers for the position of Vice Chair?
Nominate Kenani to continue on as Vice Chair.
Okay, mahalo.
I second.
Okay. Kenani? Any manao you wanna share? And do you accept that nominee, the nomination?
Mahalo, you three ladies, and I do accept.
Mahalo. Any other nominees for the position of Vice Chair? All right, hearing none, members, when your name is called, please state the name of the individual you wish to serve in the position of Vice Chair. Mahalo. Lindan?
We have Kenani Grandberg for Vice Chair, Mabel.
I move to support Kenani in the Vice Presidency.
Thank you, Lourdes.
That's my support.
I support Kenani Grandberg for Vice Chair.
Moata?
I support Kenani Grandberg as Vice Chair. Mahalo.
Ted?
Kenani Grandberg.
Kapua?
Kenani Grandberg.
Brenda?
Kenani Grandberg.
Zoltan?
Kenani.
Kenani?
Mahalo, I accept.
And Kimiana?
Kenani Grandberg.
Congratulations. Welcome back as Chair unanimous.
Mahalenui, Kenani. Members, we're gonna move on to the Secretary position formerly held by Lourdes Milan. Do we have any recommendations or nominees for the position of Secretary?
Ms. Milan.
Mahalo, Zoltan.
I second.
Okay, mahalo. Any other members? Recommendations? Okay, Lulu? Do you accept the nomination of Board Secretary?
I accept.
Mahalo. Members, we will be taking your vote, roll call vote. When your name is called, please state the name of the individual you wish to fill the seat in position of Secretary. Mahalo. Lindan?
We have Lourdes Milan for Secretary, Mabel.
I support Lulu Milan for Secretary.
Moata?
I support Lulu for Secretary, mahalo.
Ted?
Lulu Milan.
Kenani?
Lulu Milan.
Kapua?
Lulu Milan.
Brenda?
Lulu Milan.
Zoltan?
Lulu Milan.
Kimiana?
Lourdes Milan.
And Lourdes?
I accept.
Unmute, thank you. Welcome back.
Mahalo, Lulu, for your service in that role of Secretary. Members, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the position of Treasurer previously held by Member Ralston. Are there any recommendations or nominees for the position of Treasurer?
I nominate Member Ralston.
Moata, Member Ralston as a nominee?
I second.
Okay, any others? Okay, Ted, how do you feel about that nomination?
Considering the workload in the last year, which would have been zero in that capacity, it shouldn't be a major load.
Ted, can you speak a little bit into your mic? You're very, very faint. Try unmute and then speak into your mic.
I get this thing figured out, Kimi. So there hasn't been actually any Treasurer work in the last six or nine months, I don't believe. So I have no problem accepting that nomination.
Good man.
You don't wanna overwhelm me with that kuliana, Ted. Thank you so much. Seeing no other nominees, members, we're gonna take a vote for the position of Treasurer. Member Ted Ralston is that current nominee. But state the name of the individual you wish to fulfill that position when your name is called. Mahalenui. Lindan?
All right, we have Ted Ralston for Treasurer. Start with Mabel.
Auntie Mabel, you can share your vote. Try unmute, unmute. There you go.
Support Ted Ralston as Treasurer.
Thank you.
Lourdes?
Ted Ralston.
Moata?
I support Ted Ralston.
Kenani?
Ted Ralston.
Kapua?
Ted Ralston.
Brenda?
Ted Ralston.
Zoltan?
Mr. Ralston.
Kimiana?
Ted Ralston.
And Ted.
I'll go with Ted Ralston.
Congratulations. Thank you. And welcome back as Treasurer.
Mahalenui, Ted, for your service. Members, we do have the option to add on any other officers determined to be needed to conduct the board business. Is there any other officers that need to be added to our current officers? Okay, hearing none.
Kimiana, this is my manao, that it would be great if there was someone appointed to manage the media, the social media, and getting information out there. A lot of times, my chat that I had set up for the my Parks and Rights Committee is the place where all the information gets disseminated. If I didn't have that chat, sometimes people like Brenda, she didn't have the link for the meeting, or people didn't know where to go to get information, but maybe if we had someone who is, you know, monitoring it, or that's just their only kuliana, is to get information out, reminders, it would help people to get here because everyone does lead a busy life. And sometimes it really helps to get that reminder the day before or something like that. It's just a manao, but I know everyone leads a busy life. Mahalo.
Mahalo for that manao. Lulu, you have a thought?
Is that part of the Secretary job position?
It is now.
Or can we add it?
I think we can definitely create some of that kuliana, Lulu. It would be absolutely helpful. So if that's something that you're willing to talk through, I'd be happy to talk to that with you, and we can see what we can work on together.
Yes, please.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mahalo. Okay, members, we're gonna press on. Just due to time, we have quite a bit of things to still cover, and all of our community partners waiting in the wings, so meeting schedule, we need to agree to the meeting schedule currently present. We meet on the second Monday of the month, seven P M via WebEx, and at, in person at Kapala Mahale. Do we agree to continue? That is our recommendation on our meeting schedule. Lourdes?
I've been asked if we're ever gonna have them at the cafeteria again. Does anybody know?
That is up to us this evening to determine if we want to go back to the cafeteria. So if your recommendation is to do so, we will first need to create that, confirm the meeting schedule, and then we can talk about location. So do we agree, or do we have a recommendation for the meeting schedule?
I move that we keep the same time, which is on the second Monday of each month, at seven o'clock.
Mahalo, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mahalo. Any members? Sorry, one second. So we're looking to keep our current schedule at second Monday, seven P M. Anyone in opposition? Anyone abstaining?
I'm okay with it. Sounds good.
Mahalo, any abstentions? Okay, hearing none. Lindan, does that serve as a unanimous choice?
Yep, that's good.
Fantastic. So now that we have that schedule on second Mondays of the month, seven P M, do we wanna restructure the venue? Currently, it's at Kapala Mahale and on WebEx. We don't have to keep a hybrid meeting. We can go back to in-person, but that's up to this board to discuss and create solutions too. How would we like to proceed?
Oh, we can't do both. We can't do cafeteria and web and hybrid?
That is up to the board to determine, Lulu. If your recommendation is to keep it a hybrid meeting and move to the cafeteria as well as online, we'll have to work out logistics with the NCO, but that is an option that the board can discuss.
In the past, I'm sorry, in the past, has there been more public input when you had it in person?
I mean, yes and no. It depends on the topic and what the agenda looks like. I don't know that there's a significant amount of change between the participation via WebEx versus in-person. Certainly, it's a much more convenient option for those that don't live in our district.
It's all, if I can offer an opinion, Chair.
Sure.
I think that the acoustics in, we've not had good acoustics, no matter where we've been, whether it's been at at the training, the RTI, or the various cafeterias. It's always a very minimal acoustics. It's hard to hear the speakers sometimes, and speakers aren't paying attention to talking to the microphone and things like that. The hybrid meeting is, you can hear everything. It is absolutely well done in terms of facial recognition and audio and everything. So there's that aspect of the, I would call it a higher level of communication occurring on the hybrid meetings than we had in the in the public meetings, just because you can hear better.
Okay, that's my opinion. Thank you. Auntie Kapua?
I agree with Ted that not only it's easier for everyone to participate, but I also agree that it's more convenient to keep the WebEx. Because if you can't attend in person, then you can still get on your phone from wherever you're at and attend the meeting if you are a voting member. So to me, it's more, it worked better with the WebEx, and that's just my manao, having been here for a few years. I feel like the current status, that the way we run things, is working very well. I feel that there, and I've heard that many other Neighborhood Boards look to us as leaders in this realm. So I believe that changing something that doesn't, isn't broken, not warranted.
Okay, noted. So right now, I'm hearing a recommendation to keep it as a hybrid meeting. The challenge is gonna be the location. Right now, it's in-person at Kapala Mahale. Is that the recommendation, to keep it at Kapala Mahale? Because we also have to determine, you know, what the availability is gonna be for them as well. And we'll have to go through that. So are we saying hybrid meeting, keep it at Kapala Mahale? Or hybrid meeting and move it, the in-person opportunity to Waianalau Cafeteria?
I would like to see it at Waianalau Cafeteria.
Okay, there's a recommendation to keep it as a hybrid meeting with the physical location being at the Waianalau Intermediate and Elementary School Cafeteria. Any other recommendations? Okay, hearing none. Can I get a second?
I second if we do the cafeteria and keep it hybrid.
Mahalo. It's been moved and seconded. Members, this is going to be a vote on the meeting. The type of meeting will be kept as a hybrid meeting with the physical location changing from Kapala Mahale to Waianalau Intermediate Elementary Cafeteria. That is the current recommendation. So when your name is, excuse me, any abstentions? Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. That passes unanimously. Lindan, we'll have to work on that schedule and see if the cafeteria can be available to us. I know the principal did offer it, so we'll have to go through that again.
Okay, I'll follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, thank you so much for that. We're gonna continue on. We have a recess schedule. Generally, the meeting recess schedule, three non-consecutive recesses can be made during a fiscal year, designation of board committees and chairs. The board chair will designate committees and chairs for the term. Sorry, go back to recess schedule. We typically recessed in December. Sometimes in November, it's altered through the years. Is there a recommendation on a recess schedule? When the board will not be in function?
You mean changing what we already have?
If you wanna do that, yes. If you wanna keep what it is currently at, you can recommend that too.
What is it currently?
Lindan, can you confirm the recess schedule we have currently?
I'm not too sure what that is. Sorry.
I think it was December. I don't think we took two recesses off. I think we just focused on December.
Yeah.
I would like to keep December.
As a recess option?
I second, Moata.
Moata is a second. Mahalo, is there any other recommendation? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Members, anyone opposed to keeping the recess schedule as December? Any opposed? Hearing none, any abstentions? Hearing none, mahalo, that passes unanimously. The Waianalau Neighborhood Board, number thirty-two, will recess in December. Thank you. Formation of committees. The board may establish committees from among its membership and the public with regard to place of residence, without regard to place of residence. The committee chair shall be a member of the board. The committee member shall be appointed by the board, and the board chair shall be a non-voting ex-official member of all committees unless otherwise directed by the board. Members, are there any recommendations on the formation of committees? Do we wanna keep the current committees and committee schedule, or do we wanna alter the committees and the committee schedule? Any recommendations? Auntie Mabel, you were muted?
I'd like to keep the schedule as already exists.
Okay, mahalo. There's a recommendation to keep the current schedule with the current committees. Any others?
This is Kenani Grandberg, and I'll second that.
Okay, there's a second. Members, is there any discussion? I do wanna share some thoughts about where we're at with the committees, if I may. And if I need to, Lindan, do I need to pass the gavel over to Kenani to have this discussion?
I mean, it wouldn't hurt if you did.
Okay. Kenani, I'm gonna pass the gavel over to you, the virtual gavel, if you will, so that I can share. Mahalo. And then go ahead.
And you gotta call on me.
Mahalo.
Kimiana Kani, go ahead.
So the main concern I have with our committees currently is it's extensive. There's a lot of them. And generally, it was myself and one other person typically that goes to pick up the key, sets up the room, closes the room. And so I need koku with that. If we cannot commit to individuals picking up the key and opening the room, then I want us to rethink our committee schedule. Because it takes a lot of time for me to get seven days worth of committees into my schedule for opening and closing. So I'm down to keep committee schedule if people are willing to koku with picking up the key and the kuliana of closing and opening the building. Because we have to have a physical space. We can no longer stay on Zoom. Zoltan?
Yeah, are we, are you talking about opening up the meeting at the cafeteria?
Currently, our committees were being held at the Waianalau Public Library, so someone would need to pick up the key from the library during their business hours. Open the library, set it up.
I'd be willing to do that.
Okay. Thank you for your help with that. We'll continue the discussion, Lulu.
Would we still be hybrid?
Would we still be hybrid?
We have to determine that. That's our, that's what we're determining tonight.
Okay, so I'm willing to help also with the key if we can keep it hybrid.
Okay. So there's a recommendation to keep the committees. There's a recommendation to keep it hybrid. And kokoa for picking up the key. Any other thoughts?
I'm sorry, I just have one question. Um, so we are required to have a physical space no matter what, so it can't be completely virtual. Is that like a neighborhood board rule?
Yeah, that's actually a state sunshine law rule.
Sunshine law, okay, okay.
So we have to have a physical space for the public to go to.
Oh.
In addition to an option for, you know, online.
Okay.
If we want to have online, we can do that, but we have to have a physical space.
Mahalo for the clarity.
Absolutely. There may be potential, maybe sometime it changes in the near future. I don't know, but that's something we can look forward to clarifying. But as of right now, we have to have a physical space nonetheless. Auntie Mabel, you have a question?
No, just a statement for the residentsly challenged, the homeless meetings. We usually rotate between the Wa Manalo Beach Park and Huimaheina and possibly maybe one time hosting at Wyberg. So we actually put it in our agenda where we're going to meet. So we haven't had hybrid at all. Just clarifying.
Yep, mahalo. Any other thoughts before we move into a recommendation and vote?
Kimi, this is Chad. On that item you just brought up, the having to have the physical presence, maybe we should just make a recommendation that the board commission look into relieving that requirement for the purpose of subcommittee meetings. If we don't start that ball rolling, we'll never get it anywhere, but it would make it so much more convenient.
I agree.
So if we can make that recommendation to the to the commission.
Mahalo, we can take a look at how that's listed in the neighborhood plan. Lulu, you had a question?
I still think we should keep it hybrid, especially since Auntie Mabel has a problem where they're not able to be on laptops or phones at times.
Yep, understood. My other concern in regards to the hybrid is, you know, there's there's often some meetings where there's only one person alone by himself in that room. That's a safety concern that I'm bringing up. If we're going to be hybrid, I would strongly recommend that there be at least two people on site, which means committee discussions or committee members will have to make that conversation happen amongst the committees when they get reset. It is dangerous to have one sole individual in that room by themselves all night. So if we can just think about that as we move forward.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. All right, members, we're going to continue with just this vote. Then, Kenani, you can pass the gavel over back to me.
Pass the gavel back over to you.
Mahalo. All right, members, we are going to continue with the current schedule of committees with the current established committees. We will determine all of their chairs and all of that at a later time. And then it's going to be kept as hybrid, and we will keep the schedule at the Wa Manalo Public Library with the commitment that there will be kokoa to pick up the key and close the building as well as a secondary person on site. And so we'll have to work those details out per committee. But that is the recommendation at this time. And it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Mahalo. Any abstain? Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Mahalenui, gang. We will continue with the commission, other committees we've set forth. Thank you. The last that we have here is adoption of oral testimony rules. The board is to determine the amount of allocated time for speakers along with a designated timekeeper. We've not really had a timekeeper. We all kind of just check and then kind of just let people talk, and I think it's partly due because we helped to manage each other pretty well. Currently, it's listed as eight minutes for presentations, five minutes for elected officials, and three minutes for community concerns. Are there any recommended adjustments to those time slots? Okay, hearing none. Is there a a motion to accept them as they are written?
I move to accept as written.
Mahalo, Auntie Mabel with the motion. Any second?
I second it.
Was that Auntie Brenda? Yeah. Mahalo, moved and seconded. We will move into your vote. Any abstentions? Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Mahalenui, members, for your time. And the public, thank you so much for your time as well as we get all of those details squared away. We're going to continue and press on. We have resident and community concerns announcements and public reports. We have a concern brought up about the Department of Hawaiian Homelands and their development of 200 residential homes in Wa Manalo at the old farm lot of the Wong Farm. That has been something that was a little confusing for some of the members of the public. As we recall, there was a push for the farm lots area to be rezoned into smaller agricultural lots. But this residential lot project being put on the community is kind of new news. So does anyone have any details on that? If not, we're going to try and push that into an agenda item for one of our committees in September for discussion. Anyone have any manao on that?
Well, I have some concerns about turning that into a residential area.
Okay, Zoltan, go ahead. Followed by Auntie Mabel, and then we have the director of the, is that Director Sealan? Yeah, Director Sealan with a question. Zoltan?
I think there's a better location for DHHL to do their project. Although, if they do small farm lots for for a DHHL project, I mean, I can see that happening at the Wong Lot, but I don't think residential. I think that one-acre lots are sustainable for a farmer, but not much bigger than that. They'll have to hire help in order to get larger lots. So I'm not sure what DHHL is thinking. But at some later point, I wouldn't mind discussing it with everyone about an alternate location for DHHL.
Yeah, we'll move it into an agenda on on a committee. Thank you, Zoltan, for your thoughts. Auntie Mabel, followed by Director Sealan. Auntie Mabel unmute. There you go.
Anytime the department wants to build housing for Hawaiians, to me, we should support. But again, I agree with, you know, the manao that you, there is land available, but just to target that land would take their manada so many years. So if, and this project has been, I don't know how long on the calendar. So as far as I'm concerned, housing is a need. And if the department came up with a proposal, that means they have the money. So stopping the housing, to me, is is something I would not try to do, but, you know, get more information.
Fantastic. Mahalo. Director Sealan?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's ever called from back when I was at DLNR. You may want to invite somebody from DHHL out. There, I think the state was going to dedicate land to DHHL for more homesteads. The land that they were going to dedicate was further into the agricultural area. The Wong Farm land backs up on the existing DHHL homestead land. So it was kind of a three-way swap. They were going to give the ag land to the Wong's, the Wong land then to DHHL, so you could make the housing contiguous to the existing residential area. So it's something that they have been working on for probably a decade or longer. And I think somebody from DHHL can come out and explain it much better.
Fantastic. Much appreciate your manao there, Director. So we're not going to go into conversation tonight on it. Just wanted to bring it up, and it'll push it into a committee for discussion and further review. Do we have any other public concerns, community concerns or announcements? We have Ms. Sarah Harris. Thank you so much. And I saw Jenny earlier, so I'm going to invite Jenny to share as well, because I know she has some really fun stuff to share too. Ms. Harris, the time is yours.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm Sarah Harris. I'm with the Indian Counties of the Climate Change Sustainability and Resiliency. So I'm here tonight to tell you all about our long-term disaster recovery plan that we're developing in collaboration with the Department of Emergency Management. So our plan will include a roadmap for how the city and local communities can build back better from a major disaster. And I think, given recent events, this is something that we really would love community input and thought and involvement on. So I'll share a link to the project's website in the chat, so please check that out after. And as part of this planning process, we're currently gathering insights from the community through a community-wide survey. We would really love for you all to take the survey, participate, and help inform our plan. I'll put the link for the survey in the chat as well. If you could also share that out with your networks, we would really, really appreciate it. And that's all I have today. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Sarah. Thank you for the introduction to that plan. Members, we'll get that information out to you folks and we'll share it to the public for those that are willing to participate. But are there any questions for Sarah at this time? Auntie Mabel?
I wanted to apologize to the board because I didn't get my agenda in time for it to be publicized. But we have all a standing meeting from the residentsly challenged group that we always meet on the second Tuesday, which is tomorrow night. And because of this issue that has come about and my enlightenment of what's happening at the Wa Manalo Beach Park, a group of us are going to meet with, not only with the residents, but also with the Ohana at the beach park. And so it's going to start at six o'clock. It's going to be right in front of the halau. And I'm not the chair, but I'm just going to open the discussion. Because, you know, by sunshine law, we have to, we have to post a notice. So I failed to post a notice, but I'm just informing everybody that we're going to be meeting tomorrow and at six o'clock. But it's not a Wa Manalo Neighborhood Board meeting. It'll just be something that we all get together and just talk story and inform the residents that, you know, what's happened and how we could handle that.
Mahalo, Auntie Mabel. I want to go back to any questions for Sarah. Okay, hearing none. Jenny, I got your email request. You want to share a little bit about that invitation?
You mean me?
Yes, you.
Okay, wait, I'll go upstairs. So Castle High School, we did this last year where members from neighborhood boards across Ko'olapoko got together at the Key Project and spoke to students, 11th grader, 11th grade students. And it was, I mean, I thought it was really successful. Kapua was there. She could also testify. So each, there were representatives from each board. And we're doing that again this year. It's going to be at Castle High School this time. And I need to look up the dates, but I'd love it if anybody from the board would be willing to join us this year. I don't know, Kapua, would you, would you like to comment and tell us about your, if you want to, if you want to, about your experience?
I thought it was a very awesome event that you guys put on for the kids to see who in their community is involved and what's going on and to keep them connected to their community. They had some great manao to share, and I really enjoyed the day and being able to, I like how you guys did the breakout in little groups with a small group of the kids where we were able to get personal and talk story with the kids. And, or I should say the opio. And those are the, you know, future leaders of our communities. So I thought it was a very good event put on. And also, for me, I was able to make connections with other board members from other communities. So I thought it was great. Mahalo. Thank you.
Mahalenui, Jenny. Thank you so much. Good to see you. We will send out the invitation. Members, if you're interested in participating, you'll get the information from me a little bit later this evening. So thank you. Mahalo, Jenny. And again, mahalo, Sarah, for your presentation. Thank you. Any other public comments, concerns, announcements? All right, we're going to press on, gang. Mahalo for your patience. Community organizations, anyone here from Wa Manalo Elementary and Intermediate School? Hearing none, moving on. Blanche Pope Elementary School. Mahalo, hearing none, moving on. Malama Honaua Public Charter School. Aloha pu'okumu. Welcome. The time is yours.
Aloha, mahalenui. I'll try to begin this quick. So again, mahalenui for always allowing Malama Honaua to come and share about our days. We started this with Opahakea Kahua, so and to ensure that our Kahua, our foundation is strong, our kumu started this school year grounding ourselves, greeting our first day together at sunrise at Kayona. The kumu went then to the mala where our haumana have been working, to malama, our mala at Sitar. Kumu helped to malama the, the, the place where the haumana have been working all summer and through the school year, asking permission to harvest halau to provide na'ai for our first meal together. We're reminded of the gifts that ouraina provides us and the kuliana that we have as servants of ouraina. Being able to work, ma'uka to makai, our kumu were inspired to plan for the year ahead. Our haumana have been getting back to the routines of school and are loving being back with kumu and peers. We already have fukaki planned for this month, so you'll see our haumana out and about. Next week, our eighth graders will be starting off the year with our second annual eighth-grade va'akamp with Kanehuna Moku, ensuring that our year for our graduating class starts with a pa'afu foundation will spend three days and two nights with Kanehuna Moku voyaging a kamunemi, sailing and reflecting on their time at Malama Honaua. This culminating last year at Malama Honaua brings va'akamp, cover letter and resume writing, internships, and of course, they're culminating eighth grade defense, exhibiting that their makau to move on to the next level of kuliana, which is high school. From kindergartners to eighth-grade class, it's been a week of mixed emotion as we start the school year. We celebrated the bright smiles and laughter of having our keiki return to school. And we're also humbled and reminded that each day together is a gift as we across, as everyone else across the state discusses and brainstorming ways that we can kokoa our friends and ohana in Maui. Mahalenui to this board and the community leaders that allow Malama Honaua to serve Wa Manalo, our keiki and our ohana, and looking forward to sharing updates with everyone as we start the school year off. Mahalo.
Mahalenui. Principal Denise, for your time this evening, for your service to our community. Members, any questions from Malama Honaua Public Charter School? All right. Mahalenui, and congratulations on a new school year. Actually, you know what, Denise, I did have a question. I'm sorry. What was enrollment like?
We are, we're not at maximum capacity, but we are far better off than we were last year. I think at the beginning of the school year, I was telling everyone about how our kindergarten class was very small, usually abnormally small. We're actually almost at full capacity. I think we're nineteen out of twenty. And then in all the rest of our classes, we're doing, we're doing okay. And and some of our classes, as you know, we do a sixth-grade sale, and so in our sixth-grade class, we cap it, so that class is smaller. But we're near capacity at the rest of our classes. So much better. It's good to see everybody enrolling their haumana in back in school. But I do feel like there's still some maybe reservation. I think not only for ourselves, but for everyone, as people are trying to figure out how to come back from from COVID and remembering to re-enroll their, their babies back in school.
So, yeah, mahalenui. Members are moving on. We have Huimalama Okekai. Seeing none, Winred Community College.
Hello, Tere Kani. I'm having a little bit of problems with my video.
No problem. Thank you so much for joining us. We look forward to your presentation. Mahalo.
Thank you for having me. We're so excited. We began our middle college, Halau Hikili cohort, twelve students. Tere Kani, I want to thank you. I know you've already been collaborating on Tere Kani, I want to thank you. I know you've already been collaborating on talking about them coming to visit you at sites. I also have to thank Pu'okumu España. She shared her van for the month of August because we had some transportation issues that they can go on hua'kaui tomorrow, or Wednesday, actually. They'll be going and working in the mala at WCC. They're a bunch of ninth graders and they're on our campus four days a week. Well, one day is a hua'kaui sometimes on campus, sometimes in the community. And just really bright kids from Waimeanalo and Kailua that get to not just envision themselves in college, but actually be in college from their first day of ninth grade. Super exciting. Also, I wanted to share an update. I want to thank the Waimeanalo Neighborhood Board for sharing about our scholarship opportunities. At WCC, two demographics we were really have been concerned about, we remain concerned about are that our native Hawaiian male enrollment had dropped drastically in the past five years. And also our Pell Eligible Student Enrollment. Pell is a financial aid marker of low income. And through, when we look at our freshmen that receive the scholarship, we have increased both native Hawaiian males drastically, like doubled them. And doubled their percentage in the population. And we've also increased the number of students coming to Windward with Pell. So I want to thank the board for their help with that. We're really excited. Classes begin next week. We're all, of course, thinking of our relatives on Maui. And I do want to share if any of you have relatives, because it's so hard to get news out right now. Maui College will begin one week later. Their first day of class will be the twenty eighth. All the other community colleges will begin on the same day, which is one week from today. Wait, is it Monday? It's been a long day. Monday, yes. One week from today, all the other CCs. But Maui will start one week later. And we're all working to support students who have relatives, connections. And we actually had a few students at Windward who are residents of Maui. So mahalo, thank you to the neighborhood board for your time every month.
Mahalenui. Thank you so much, Artist. Any questions for the Chancellor? All right, Artist, thank you so much. Members are moving on. We have University of Hawaii College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources. Ante Ilima, thank you so much. Ante Ilima, the time is yours.
Aloha, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Aloha for letting me be here this evening, calling you from the west side of Oahu. We're just be having some, I wanna coming back to school with Malama Honoa Public Charter School. And it's a little bit, it's been a little bit of a slow month thus far in August. Nothing exciting happened yet. Like Artist mentioned, the university is back in session next week and we look forward to a busy fall semester. And I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Mahalenui. Members, any questions for Sitar? Okay, we have none. Ante Ilima, I don't know if you were on at the start of the meeting, but there is a, a community wanted to recognize you and Ante Blanche for the work that Ke'kula Nui has done to support and serve our Maui community in concert with the community here in Waimeanalo. And so they extended their appreciation to you and Ke'kula Nui o Waimeanalo for your leadership. And we also send our, our condolences to your ohana during this time as well, as we grieve together. And so we just want to say we love you and we're here as a community with you. So, yeah, we wanted to just make sure you knew that.
I guess I missed that, but mahalo all of you for condolences and I look forward to upcoming year. Mahalo.
We're going to pass over to our Hawaii Job Corps. Do we have Ante Julie here this evening? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to Waimeanalo Health Center. Jasmine.
Aloha.
Thank you for being here Jasmine. Mahalo for your time.
Thank you for having me. A few updates for you all. Right now, for all MedQuest members, there is a Medicaid Reternation process happening. I think I shared about this a few months back, but just wanted to give an update that MedQuest is redetermining eligibility for its members. During the pandemic, there was continuous coverage. So now there's a redetermination happening. And they've been sending pink envelopes to members that has more information about their eligibility. So if you are a MedQuest member, please keep an eye out for that envelope. Some people are asking whether they're no longer eligible or how do they submit updates? And our outreach team is here to help. So if anyone has questions about the process or needs help, they can come to any of our sites or they can call our main line at two five nine seven nine four eight and ask for our mamaki team. And I'll put a link in the chat with more information as well. Also, I wanted to share that we're still hiring. So if anyone's looking for a position, you can visit waimeanalohealth.org/careers. And there's positions across the health center available. Mahalo.
Mahalenui Jasmine, thank you so much for that update. Members, any questions for Jasmine? Waimeanalo Health Center. Okay, seeing none. Jasmine, I did want to acknowledge the, and celebrate Mary Oneha of the Waimeanalo, Waimeanalo Health Center on her two thousand and twenty-three Hua'kau'le Award that she received from the Hawaii Community Foundation. The Hua'kau'le Award pays tribute to leaders from the nonprofit sector, the guiding forces in our community who strive to make Hawaii a better place. And so on behalf of our neighborhood board, we'd like to extend our deepest gratitude and our congratulations to Mary and the team that make up the Waimeanalo Health Center that has continued to strive towards a better Waimeanalo. And so please extend our congratulations to her and that it's a privilege to continue to have her serving our community. So mahalenui for that.
Mahalo Tere Kani. We'll definitely share that. And we're also thankful to have, to have her as our leader for the health center.
Fantastic. Mahalo for your time Jasmine. We're going to move on. Do we have anyone here from the Homestead Association? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to Bellows Air Force Station. Major Chen, thank you so much for your time, sir. The time is yours. Are you still having communication issues, Major Chen? You can just put it in the chat if you are, and then maybe a written report can email to me. I can share it at a later time with the community. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and do that? If you want to put anything in the chat, you're welcome to. If not, you can send a written review and then I can send it out to the community later. That would be great. If your communications do come back on at some point, please go ahead and just let me know. We can have you share. Okay. We're going to move on then, members, to Marine Corps Base Hawaii. I see several people here. Gunnery Sergeant, are you presenting tonight? And then I saw someone else from Marine Corps Base. Is that correct?
Good evening, everybody. How are you doing? With me tonight as well is Christie. She's on the line. She's a part of our Community Relations Office as well. So she'll be joining us from time to time and presenting as well when needed. All right, we'll start enough, just to kind of hit some of the questions that we had last year. I believe Councilwoman Ke'aina has some questions in regards to repi funds assisting with invasive species, species management. So first and foremost, we are looking forward to attending the Waimeanalo Invasive Species Meeting that will be taking place on Monday. Colonel Bevan will be attending as well as our repi representative, Leah Rothbaum. She is our Environmental Protection Specialist and she'll be providing some insight in regards to the repi program and that funding. But for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, the Office of Secretary of Defense through the repi program funded a multi-year repi project that for detection and management of high-impact aquatic and terrestrial invasive species management in Windward Oahu to include Waimeanalo. On land, this project specifically addresses concerns about infestation of little fire ants and koki frogs. The project applicant was DLNR in collaboration with the UH Hawaii Pacific Cooperative Studies Unit. So that just happened this year and we're still funding that throughout the rest of the year. And our repi will be able to provide some more details in regards to the actual funds that were, that were provided come Monday. Moving forward, today, at the request of the US Army Pacific and in accordance with the US federal law, Marines with VMGR one fifty-three, our KC one thirty aircraft squadron, provided transport to the Joint Task Force Fifty personnel and equipment from Marine Corps Base Hawaii to Maui. The Joint Task Force Fifty is the command and control element which will coordinate the department with the defense efforts on the request of appropriate government authorities. So once they're on the ground and they do a thorough assessment, then we'll be able to, we'll be able to provide additional military support towards those affected in Maui. And then moving forward, the last thing I have to pass was, public camping at Bellows will resume for Labor Day weekend. So through the Honolulu Police, I'm sorry, the Honolulu Department of Parks and Recreation camping permits will be available starting at five PM on Friday, August eighteenth. Pending any questions, that's what I have for this evening.
Gunnery Sergeant, thank you so much for coming back to us with those, those updates. We appreciate it. We have Lulu, question?
Yes, you said the little fire ants and the koki frogs. What about CRB?
So that, that wasn't bundled in that particular challenge through the repi program. But our representative will be there on Monday to discuss other ways that we could cooperate and collaborate in regards to addressing that specific species as well.
Mahalenui. Any other questions? Ante Lapua?
Aloha, and thank you for always being here to support our community. I have a question regarding the opening of Bellows for camping. In the past, there's been, as the past Chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee, there's been so much illegal activity that happens on the beach there. Like we have people coming in and driving their cars and trucks in because it's easy to access from that point. So what kind of security is going to be taking place as the beach fills up to almost capacity on camping weekend?
So that's, that's a good concern. And right now, our Provost Marshal Office is looking at actually increasing its patrols down in that Pacific area, knowing that it's going to be opening up for overnight camping. I don't know exactly how much they're going to increase the patrols, but I know that's already been mentioned in preparation for the potential numbers of personnel staying out there.
All right, mahalo, because it does also overflow into hunananiho when that happens. Yeah, mahalo.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and bring that up as well, just to touch base with our Provost Marshal Office.
Thank you so much. Aloha.
Thank you.
Mahalo. Any other questions for Marine Corps Base Hawaii?
Yes, this is Ted Kimi for the meeting on the twenty-first. Is that open to the public?
Yeah, the council member will be sharing about that just in a second, Ted.
Okay.
Thank you. Kenani?
Hi, yes. Could you remind me again why the camping was closed?
So the camping was closed for a fifteen-week period and that was because our Department of Natural Resources on our installation has identified Bellows Beach as a potential breeding ground for the sea turtles. So during that fifteen-month period, we shut up, shut the overnight camping down. That's the time they beach and lay their nest.
And that has been cleared?
Yes, that has been cleared as of today, actually.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mahalo for the question Gunnery Sergeant. That's all I see as far as hands go. So mahalenui for your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Members, we're going to move on. We have our City Councilmember, Esther Ke'aina. Thank you, Councilmember, for your patience. We look forward to your update.
Thank you, Chair. I'm assuming the Hawaii Army National Guard's not here?
I apologize. Thank you for bringing that up. Army National Guard? Hearing none. Moving on. City Councilwoman, thank you so much for your time and patience. The time is yours.
Thank you. And thank you for the Vice Chair for asking about the, the town hall on Monday. So largely because of the leadership of Chair Ki'neona, Ki'neona Kani, we are collectively pulling together a Windward community meeting on invasive species prevention, control, and eradication efforts for the little fire ant, coconut rhinoceros beetle, and koki frog infestations. We have confirmed, we have confirmed for the town hall, the, as you heard, both the Director for Parks and Rec on behalf of the mayor. We also have the Chair of the Department of Land and Natural Resources and the Chair of the Department of Agriculture. And it's going to be an hour and a half forum. We're going to have, after welcome remarks, we're going to have an overview of invasive species management statewide. And then we are going to drill down and have experts in the field on all of the three invasives that we're talking about. This afternoon, we were able, through the leadership of Senator Ke'ho Kalole, to go and visit the, you know, the Waimeanalo shop for little fire ant. And they will have a map on Monday of the entire island as well as infestations along the Windward side. And it's clear to me that the major infestations are all on the Windward side, so it has to be targeted. I also wanted to share, so I highly recommend that everybody come to this meeting. For me, the purpose is twofold. It's to educate the community on what is going on and how they can help to protect themselves and their families on the manner of how these policymakers are dealing with infestations. But a second, I'm actually doing it to call, to issue a call of support for state funding. It's about five million dollars collectively. I'm, I'm, I've been dealing with invasive species for over thirty years. That is woefully inadequate and should be between ten to twenty million dollars annually. And so I don't think it's enough for everyone to react when there's infestations. We need to do more to make sure that we help our lawmakers. And fortunately for us, Senator Ke'ho Kalole has been an ardent advocate as well as Representative Lisa Martin, who's actually on the Hawaii Invasive Species Council. I also wanted to, I was pleased to hear that the city's Office of Climate Change is doing their survey. I was not aware that they were doing that, working in concert with the city's emergency management team. But I did want to share, and Gloria is going to be putting in the chat box both the flyer for the meeting on Monday as well as a Kailua emergency preparedness fair that's going to occur on Saturday, August twenty-sixth from nine to one PM at the Kailua Town Center. I think what Maui has, apart from the travesty of what has gone on in Maui, I think it's a wake-up call for all of us to ask ourselves, what plans do we have in place? Whether it be hurricane, fire, or, or tidal wave, right? And I think it's good for all of us to figure it out collectively at the county, state, federal level, as well as with the communities. And that's certainly what we're looking at with regard to the invasive species meeting on Monday. I will say, for those of you who care deeply about the program, and I know the Chair does, we are trying to build momentum among the Windward electates. And so we, Senator Ke'ho Kalole has already secured another venue in September in Kaniohe to deal with the little fire ant specifically because we already know where the infestations are. This will be at Ben Parker Elementary School at six o'clock. I will be talking to Representative Martin because I know that she would probably like to follow up with something in Kailua and maybe target October. I do believe that we need to keep the momentum up so that we realize that we're all in this together. And perhaps one of these meetings will focus on the federal role for invasive species because clearly Kaniohe Marine Corps Base and all of the bases in Hawaii have a role to play. And they have been contributing. So I'm, I will talk to DLNR because I don't know why their application did not include the coconut rhinoceros beetle. Because a fact, separate from the fact that plants can trans- Because a fact, uh, separate from the fact that, uh, plants can transport the little fire ant, there is a lot of topsoil that is being sold, right? From Waimeanalo. And, uh, and topsoil, uh, is, uh, is a breeding ground uh, for, and mulch is a breeding ground for the coconut rhinoceros beetle, and I don't know if Marine Corps Base is still on, um. Sergeant Paris, I see you still on. I do want to flag for you that uh, I think you guys need to, uh, educate the Department of Agriculture because, uh, I was just talking about the rep program to them, and, uh, they have a C R, coconut rhinoceros beetle infestation outside of Schofield. And so I told them a rep program, and I don't think they're that familiar because they said, oh, no, it's outside the fence line, and I said, that's what the rep program is for. So, um, flexibility to do a lot, but I need to appeal to you that invasive species must be a priority because we're gonna do our best. Uh, I'm gonna try to see what I could do at the county now because they don't see it as their role, but, um, I'm hoping with Director Thielen, uh, we can convince uh, the mayor to understand that we should be, have policies in place and maybe cook a little bit. Especially on the little fire ant because they're only getting like piddly amount of money. And the rate of return on money for the little fire ant could help for the, uh, little fire ant, um, infestation. And then lastly, I'm so sorry for taking so long on that issue, but, um, I wanted to, uh, also share that I visited Bumpy Kanahele's compound this afternoon with, uh, of course, Brandon Makaavaava. And, um, I was pleased to go up there and see what they're doing on agriculture and economic diversification. And of course, we talked about the apology resolution. Uh, this year on November twenty-third will be the thirtieth anniversary of the apology resolution. I will be, um, looking to work, uh, Gloria, if you could help me. I made a commitment that I would like to have a forum, uh, in Waimeanalo and preferably at the Hale for the Hawaiian Homestead Community. I will, um, inform the community on when that will be. It will be in the evening. And what I'd like to do is talk about the history, uh, what happened, where we are, and where we need to move forward. Uh, clearly, everybody knows that, um, the Nation of Hawaii's founding was based on the apology, and I think, um, what was, um, very educational for me today is we need to move beyond political boundaries and uh, everyone, you know, always thinking of nation within the nation or independence, and I think, uh, what Bumpy them are doing and a lot of other people are doing is just, um, uh, exerting self-determination versus a people. And doing all of the other elements of nation building. And that, uh, I think we all realize we need not be constrained and fight among each other on all of the various models of sovereignty for us to collectively move forward as a Lahui, and that's the kind of conversation we're probably gonna be having in this, in November. So that's my, uh, presentation for this evening. I know, uh, Director Thielen talked about the real property taxes. If you have any questions, please call me. Separate from the homeowner's exemption, which happens automatically if you have applied for it. If you haven't, contact them by October second. For me, the more, um, I think, I think the, uh, tax credit could really, uh, transform people's lives if they're eligible. If you are, if you know of someone, a friend or family member who makes no more than eighty thousand dollars, and they are title holders collectively on the title of property, uh, under the new, uh, bill that just passed, uh, Bill thirty-seven, um, they are capped at three percent of their income, uh, for real property taxes, and I think that could help a lot of Kupuna, uh, who are in fixed incomes. And so for anybody who is interested, if you didn't catch the, um, emails and numbers, please contact our office and we will get that to you. Again, it's October second. And that's it. That's my presentation.
Councilmember, thank you so much for your leadership. Members, any questions for the councilmember? Anthony Kupua?
Mahalo, as always, Esther for being here, councilmember Esther Kiaina. Um, I did have just the, that one comment that you said about the, um, coconut rhinoceros beetle um, and how people, um, feel like it's outside of their area. Um, but that they fly, they travel, and it, and it's so very important that we, um, focus on every one of those invasive species, but the coconut, coconut rhinoceros beetle directly affects, will affect our food source. And so in that perspective, it should be probably at the very top. Um, because it will directly affect our food source and endanger it, um. But the, the little fire ants, to me, is also very, uh, a big priority. And, and thank you so much for trying to get more funding towards that because they do definitely need that. Um, and once we get to the point of no return, it will be very hard to come back from there. Um, I mean, it's, it'll be very hard. Let, let's do it now before we get to that point, is maimeanaho. And, um,
Yeah. Absolutely.
So much.
I have to tell you, so, uh, we had a little small hui, um, with, uh, some of the Windward electates this afternoon, and, uh, Christie Mark, Martin, who's gonna be there on Monday, uh, was there to, uh, plug in some history, but, uh, I asked for a breakdown of the county, state, and federal funding, uh, that's coming to Hawaii. And although it's difficult, it has to be made because it's hard for us to make an ask to the Hawaii Congressional delegation and not be specific. And I know people don't talk about the brown tree snake. I've been dealing with that issue for thirty years. If we were not pumping in the money that we have, which is, uh, about three point five million in preventative controls at all of the airports, um, and ports on Guam, and all the research methodology, that is, uh, not counting D O D funding. Um, that has been helpful in stemming the spread of the brown tree snake, uh, to Hawaii. So brown tree snake actually is the greatest threat to Hawaii. Because if a pregnant snake were to get here, it could help in the decimation of our native bird species. Now, now, I think Hawaii is sleeping because they don't realize that in order to protect the, um, the, the number of, uh, of, of native species here, which is, uh, we're tops in the nation, you need to, uh, pump in the money to protect our communities. And I just think that it's a miss. So, uh, Chair, um, Connie, I just wanna commend you because, um, you, this has all been started because you were asking each and one of us, and I don't know if you guys remember, I kinda smiled like, oh, wow, what, what's with the county, right? But it made me think, oh, my God, Esther, you've been dealing this for thirty years. You just have other kuliana. Why don't you spend some time on it again? And why don't you think, what can the city do? So I am gonna try to put money, even if I'm gonna get black. And I'm thinking, you know, on the coconut rhinoceros beetle, it's not just about money. It's about best practices on how to mitigate. So because we know that every, where, wherever you see green waste, especially coconut fronds and everything else, that is where they love to party, right? So we need to have better management practices at all levels of government. The Park, Department of Parks and Rep, the Department Environmental Services, right? To figure out how, as a government, we could do better, but what I want on Monday is to teach our community what we can do better. And be careful of, right?
Awesome, mahalo. And, and again, about the sovereignty within us. Nobody can take our sovereignty from within us. Um, we have that, just like our D N A. So, um, I, I believe that we are sovereign. And we will remain sovereign, but when the U S, um, recognizes that they have a kuliana to that, then we will make forward movement, mahalo.
Thank you. Look forward to having you at our forum in November, okay?
I will try my best, but with, you know, I just stepped down from the neighborhood board tonight.
Yeah, take care of mom first.
Yes, I will.
We'll try to livestream it so you can see it via home.
Yes, that would be great.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
We have a question, Zoltan. Question for the councilmember?
I, I do. Um, my neighbor, Earth Products, they are the largest producers of, uh, soil, and when you mentioned that the coconut, uh, leaves, there's a tremendous amount of green waste that they're taking to that location. Couldn't, couldn't you ask them if they could hire somebody or the, or the county look after the products that they do haul out of there? There's, there has to be tons and tons of that soil that is being taken out, and all of that waste is from Waimeanalo.
Got it. Uh, so thank you very much for the question. We actually discussed it today to find out if the State Department of Agriculture already has the authority to be able to access all of these businesses. Uh, I think, and the answer is yes. The question is, uh, whether, uh, the businesses are gonna do anything about it because there's actually a lot of assistance free of cost uh, to be able to use best management practices, and that is the kind of dialogue we're gonna have on Monday. Uh, I'm not trying to put anybody, um, uh, in, uh, uh, the, 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 the meeting on Monday is not to, um, uh, push anybody up against the wall, but I think it's to have a hard discussion to tell everybody that the community can only do so much, and that government and businesses have to be part of this solution. So, uh, in an ideal world, uh, there should be best management practices of how to deal with both the coconut rhinoceros beetle as well as the little fire ant. And, uh, we are trying to educate the community to know what to hold people accountable for. So in the same way that you hold us accountable, you should be holding these businesses accountable and say, listen, this is not putting a black eye on you. Uh, why don't you let them go in there and go and do what they need to do so that they can have, I think it's called, um, uh, they have something, uh, plant porno? I think something like that. It's a stamp, an official stamp.
There you go.
Having worked with, um, the, uh, ways to, um, to treat, uh, invasives and, um, get a sample approval, but, uh, Zoltan, first of all, um, welcome to the board.
Thank you.
You love Waimeanalo, and, uh, this is the kind of input we need, so please come on Monday.
All right. Thank you.
Mahalo, Zoltan. Uh, last question from Lulu. Lulu, you have a question?
Sorry, I forgot to unmute.
Okay, no problem. Councilmember, thank you so much for your time and service. We look forward to seeing you on Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Mahalo. Members, we're gonna, we're gonna pull over to our state Senator Chris Lee. Do we have Chris Lee present this evening? Okay, hearing none. Representative Lisa Martin. Hearing none. Governor Josh Green. We did have a report sent from his office. I'll read it very briefly and I'll forward it over to you folks. Uh, Governor Green's monthly newsletter, Kialaho, A New Path Forward is available with a link. Uh, link to subscribe, you can go ahead to governor.hawaii.gov/newsletter slash to sign up for that. Uh, Governor Green's supporting wildlife relief effort, uh, wildfire relief efforts. He issued a fist emergency proclamation relating to wildfires. Establish a temporary housing task force to work with federal partners, securing one thousand hotel rooms and displaced, for displaced families. Coordinating responsive federal, state, county, and private resources. Uh, how the community can assist. Several nonprofits have launched fire relief efforts, including Hawaii Community Foundation, Maui Strong Fund. Hawaii Red Cross is assisting with shelters for those displaced by the fires. And for additional information on how to support wildfire relief efforts, refer to, uh, the dod.hawaii.gov/haima slash August dash two zero two three dash wildfires, uh, for more information. Queen Lili'okalani Royal Standard returns to Hawaii after a hundred thirty years, last seen flying above Washington Place on January twentieth, eighteen ninety-three. Two private benefactors purchased it, Princess Abigail Kuananakuah and Brendan Damon Ethington. Uh, there is a video of the ceremony and a Facebook video also available, uh, and that is the update from the governor's office. Are there any questions for the governor? Members, any questions for the office of Governor Josh Green? Anthony Kupua?
Not that I wanna leave on a bad note, but, um, I have a lot of questions for the governor's office, you know? The, I was very, very disappointed in the showing of the governor's office and, and all of these state officials that should have been there for Maui. Um, and it really makes me feel unsafe living here, um, in Hawaii of, if something like that happened here, and in, it probably wouldn't happen for us because we, as a neighborhood board, would not let that happen, but what I don't, what I just wanna say is, building housing, I, I get it that everyone needs housing. But at what cost does it come to us? And, and to come to a, a place of devastation where people lost everything and their family members are still in the ground, burnt charcoal crisp, and to be talking about, we're gonna build, we're gonna build, we're gonna build. To me, that's shameful. And I think the governor's office really needs to start thinking about the way they handle things. Um, for them to say things like, we didn't know what to do. Hasn't California been having these wildfires, fires for decades? And nobody had a plan yet in Hawaii to handle it? And to be checking on these things, to me, it's just a cop-out excuse, and I was very disappointed in our state officials. So that, that's just maimeanaho, and I needed to share it.
Um, mahalo. Any other questions for the governor's office? Uh, Lulu, followed by Kanani Granberg?
Um, I don't know if this is, well, I guess it is the governor's office, but what about, um, I saw a post about, um, the property tax is gonna be due for people in Maui. And how are they going to pay for it if they have no home, they have no business? What happens to them?
Okay, noted your question. Thank you. I will ask, uh, in a report back. Uh, Kanani Granberg, followed by Brenda Wong.
Hi, yes, it was mentioned that there was a thousand rooms. Um, how much of that thousand, like, what's the percentage between who occupy those thousand rooms between tourists and actual locals?
Okay, noted. Thank you for that question. Anthony, Brenda?
Yeah, I just wanna ask the governor's office about all the supplies that are going out to Maui. I've heard a lot of different things, but one thing I've heard is that there's a bottleneck in getting the supplies out, and, um, they're only having certain, um, organizations in, so I just would like to ask this office to do a better job in getting the resources that have been sent to Maui out to the people.
Okay, mahalo, noted. Any other questions for the office of Governor Josh Green?
Actually, I do have a question. This is Mojata.
That's up, please, go ahead.
If there's like a public plan, um, recovery plan that they could share with us, I would, I would like to see if we could get our hands on that.
Okay. Noted. And really, when I say noted, I'm, I'm hoping Lyndon's writing it all down. Lyndon, do we, um, do we have? Okay, I wrote it down too, but, okay, mahalo, Lyndon. Lulu, you have a question?
Yeah, one more thing. Um, I know, obviously, some places have to be rebuilt, but is there, is there a way that there's some cities in the continent where they, they have rules where you can build, but has to have like a certain look to it, you know, so it either blends in with the style of that, that town that's been there for, for a long time, or, uh, the area it's in? Since it's coming to a new chance to do this right, maybe make it to where, I don't know, it's, it's not so much looking like California, but more like looking like Hawaii when you rebuild.
Okay. Thank you, Lulu. All right, I don't see any other hands, so I'm gonna stop that conversation at that, but I'm mahalo all of you folks. Um, and yeah, Lyndon, if we can get that over to, to the governor's office, to Anthony, that would be great. If we have to send him the clip, that would be great, too. Whatever he says, yes. Thank you. We had the office of the Congresswoman, Jill Tokuta, this evening. Thanks, seeing none. We're gonna move. Uh, I, I just wanna note that, uh, the commander at Bellows did put information in the chat, members, for those of you, uh, that can read it. Let me just go up real quick through it. Let me just go up real quick through it. I just want to make sure that we honor uh what he wrote in there. And so follow me, I'm going up to that. All right, a few updates from Bellows Air Force Station. The Military Maintenance Response Program, MMRP, is on station and working Phase One. Restoration Advisory Board Rap Meeting is projected for November sixth. Uh so please make a note of that. Additionally, the Integrated Cultural Resources Management Plan, ICROM, at Bellows Air Force Station was sent out for review. Please provide questions and comments within thirty days. I'll double check my emails this evening, members, and I'll send that out to you and you can forward out uh if you didn't receive it yet. Um myself and few Bellows team members will be attending the invasive species meeting on twenty first August as well. We look forward to having you there. And lastly, we're looking to hire. So we're proud to say eighty to eighty-five percent of our staff are from Waianalau area. Visit the bellowsairforcestation.com/careers website for more information. Also, I want to read uh the recommendation, uh excuse me, the update from, where did it go? From the Honolulu Bicycling League. There we go. So Christopher Salis, I don't know how we missed him earlier, but uh he wanted to announce the Hawaii Bicycling League will be hosting Waianalau Backroads cleanup this Saturday from eight thirty to one PM. Uh and he left a link in the chat. We'll also be hosting a fix a flat workshop to teach and show how to work on one's bike and how to fix a flat tire from two to three thirty. And so that's from the Honolulu Bicycling League. Um with that being said, I do want to update one final update before we move into and close our board meeting with our board business. I just said a, a text earlier during our meeting from Auntie Blanch at Huimahiaina. Uh if there are any physical bodies uh that are ready to uh kokoa, they need some help loading an incredible amount of products and sources, resources onto the trucks tomorrow. They're looking for some kokoa and hands uh to stop by at Huimahiaina on Oluolu Street uh to kokoa with the, the filling of those resources into the trucks. And so uh if anyone's available to do that, including our um our military folks, I know it's very last minute, but if there's any extra hands you folks can put forth, uh please text me and I can connect you with uh Auntie, Auntie Blanch folks that are looking for some support there. Tremendous amount of, of resources donated and uh mahalo to all of those that are on this call and those that are not, that helped to assist with the uh getting more additional uh trucks and additional containers so that they could get all of that out. Uh time, Lulu, I, I didn't get a time on the text. I'm, I'm gonna just say confidently, maybe eight AM is a good time to start. I'm sure Auntie Blanch then will be up early anyway. Uh Auntie Mabel, do you have any thought or recommendation on what time some people should show up?
Eight o'clock is good. Although Blanch, uh Blanch is having people come at five thirty sometimes. Like eight o'clock was what we had actually um agreed.
Okay, sounds good. Mahalo. Uh so if you're interested in, in kokoa, please go ahead and do so. Uh reminder that it's a residential area, so drive slowly, drive safely. Yeah, and try to far pull as it's going to be kind of tight, but yeah, just wanted to do that. Members, we're gonna move on. Approval of meeting minutes, we have May eighth, twenty twenty-three, regular board, board meeting minutes, as well as July tenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion uh for acceptance on Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes?
Uh-huh, I assume.
Thank you, Ted. Is there a second?
A second.
Auntie Mabel with the second, Ted with the initial. Uh members, we're in discussion. Any amendments need to be made? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're gonna close that discussion. It's been moved and seconded, members. Anyone opposed to the approval of May eighth, twenty twenty-three, regular board meeting minutes? Any opposed? Thank you. Hearing none, any abstain? All right, noting nine members present, that passes unanimously. Thank you for your help with that. July tenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Lulu. There's a main motion made by Lulu. Is there a second?
A second.
Ted with the second, members, we're in discussion. Any amendments need to be made to the July tenth, regular meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna close discussion, members. Uh this is uh your vote to approve the July tenth, Monday, regular meeting minutes, twenty twenty-three. Any opposed? Any abstain? Mahalo, that brings us to nine uh unanimous vote to support the approval of meeting minutes. Uh on our board meeting, uh board business, we have speed calming measures on Hehe Manu Street. I just want to update the board that uh the requests went in. So it's on the council member's uh desk. I know she's been working on that with her team. Uh and then the representative's office has also requested some, some work as well. So I, I do want to share that uh our wonderful community members did do a tally and a post. Uh they went out and, and uh asked their community and they got a tally of how many supports and how many don't support and took an inventory of that in the immediate areas. And so we'll be forwarding that information uh to the requested uh folks at uh at a later time. We look forward to those updates to uh speed calming measures on Hehe Manu Street. Uh response to action to coconut rhinoceros beetle and little fire ants has been taken well, uh as council member shared. A lot of conversations happening around the state really now. Uh we will have a meeting on Monday, the twenty first, twenty twenty-three, from six PM to seven thirty at the Waianalau Cafeteria. If you're interested in attending, I strongly suggest you do. Uh and from this conversation, we will be taking some action items back to Ko, Kokoa, the council member as well as the representation at the state level uh to create better rules uh and clean up some of the clogs that have stopped in progress to addressing invasive species. So mahalo for your folks' attention to that. Please share that information out when you get it um and share it on social media. With that being said, we also want to ask that if there's anyone that can kokoa with, you know, food and drinks, snacks and stuff, that would be great. Just bring what you can. Uh we'll try to have some available for the community uh to participate in there. That brings us to the end of our meeting, members. We are at nine forty, meeting announcements. Neighborhood Commission Office meeting announcements. Uh Lyndon, do you have anything to announce from the neighborhood office? Neighborhood Commission Office?
Nothing new with me, but I'll, I put my email in the chat so that you can reach out to me for those that need, that I don't have the email. So I can go ahead and get the forms that we need.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Um, we're gonna continue the next Waianalau neighborhood, oh, excuse me, the next meeting of the Neighborhood Commission is tentatively scheduled for Monday, August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, at six PM on WebEx and at Kapala Mahalit, first floor, conference room one uh one five three. If you're interested in viewing and participating, please visit the NCO website for more details. The next Waianalau Neighborhood Board, regular monthly meeting, as it was determined this evening, will be on Monday, September eleventh uh at seven PM here on WebEx as well as, we will confirm if it will be at the Waianalau cafeteria or if it will be at Kapalama until we can have that confirmation. So uh Ted Ralston, you have a comment? Member Austin?
Sorry about that. So I just, uh if I can make two comments or run out on the agenda, something came up just recently. The FAA is uh publishing for review new uh tour helicopter routes which would affect us in, in some way or other, because we have a lot of helicopter traffic here. I put in the chat the uh draft document that's being reviewed. And it, this thing really snuck up on us. We only have like about twenty more days to respond to it. So I asked people to pay attention to that. And uh let's find ways that we can um not just make it safer, but just get rid of it. That would be the, the best thing, I think, for all of us. Uh second thing, just on the transportation side, uh the, we had to walk around a lot two weeks ago with the Department of Transportation and, and uh the contractor on the highway project. It'll be completed in September. And uh so we should see um a greater relief at that point in time. Made a few design changes during a walk around. I'll report them in a written uh report to you.
Mahalo, Ted. Can I also ask you, Ted, if you can follow up with our Congresswoman's office? I'm, I'm a little disappointed that we didn't get information about this through them. Um but can you bring it up to their radar?
I will do that.
Appreciate it. Mahalo for the updates. Thank you. Uh our broadcast schedule, we uh continue to have our broadcast schedule for the Neighborhood Board, number thirty-two uh via Olalo, channel forty-nine, on the fourth Monday and the, of the month uh at nine PM and the first and third Saturdays of the month. Uh and so that's gonna continue to uh take place as it's been. Video replay can be found at the website listed on the Neighborhood Board uh agenda. The next Waikai Neighborhood Board is scheduled on the last Thursdays of the month, but also confirmed at honolulu.gov slash NCO. Pahu neighborhood board, number twenty-nine, meeting is scheduled on the second Wednesdays, again confirmed. Uh the Kani Ohi Neighborhood Board scheduled on the third Thursday and the Kailua Neighborhood Board scheduled on the first Thursdays of the month. Please go ahead and double check uh the, the agendas and the uh website for details regarding that. Members, if you are not signed up to receive your agenda and meeting minutes via the mail or via email, strongly recommend that you do. This goes for the public as well. Be very important for you folks to have access to that ahead of time so you can participate. Uh we will look forward to our next meeting and um Ted, you have another comment?
No, we're, we're, I'm, I just, I'll take my hand down.
Okay, Zoltan, you have a comment? Zoltan, you can unmute and then go ahead with your comment.
Uh Ted, this is a, a clarification from you, please. Are you saying that the uh the tours, uh tour helicopters are supposed to be coming through Waianalau?
Oh, they have been for a long time.
Really? Well, we have to do something about that.
Sounds good. Thank you, Zoltan. Yeah, no problem. Members, any last comments, questions or concerns before we adjourn our evening? All right, I'm seeing none. I do want to appreciate and send my appreciation to all of you uh for staying on with us, for your committed service to Waianalau. To Ante Kapua, for your continued love and aloha for our community, and we send that right back to you and your ohana during this time. Uh and look forward to your continued participation when and how you can. Uh to the rest of us, we have a lot of work ahead of us to restructure our uh um neighborhood board committees. I strongly, strongly want to advocate that we do not, again, we do not start neighborhood board committees until we have caught up with all our meeting minutes. I think that's the least we should be able to accomplish before uh we resume. If your meeting minutes and your committees are not caught up to date, which we are not in many of them, I strongly suggest we do that before we resume. Ante Kapua?
Um I will commit to um putting in some time to put together all that I have. Um and maybe on a zip drive or something and get it over to my committee. Um I don't know who, maybe Brenda will take care of it to bring it into the board. Mahalo.
And uh, Kapua, if I can ask, you are gonna have somebody help me?
I'm gonna have somebody help you too.
I think you said so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah. We'll find somebody to help you too, Ted.
You guys converse on offline for that, Lulu?
Oh, I'm gonna offer and see if I can help Ted in something.
Okay, you guys converse offline for that. We'll get that figured out. All right, if there's nothing else, does anyone want to offer a pulle for us this evening? Can be a member of the public. I don't mind choosing somebody.
A volunteer.
Mahalo, Auntie Brenda, thank you so much.
Mahalo, Kea Kua, for Waianalau, that you love Waianalau. Mahalo for this board, for Kamiona's leadership, each person. And we invite you to um give Waianalau all that we need, Lord, all those things that we talked about tonight. We invite you to lead us and guide us and give us your power and your aloha. And we ask that you would um continue to unify and also bring more people in Waianalau to be involved in all these things that need um attention. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Mahalo, Auntie Brenda, for that. Everyone, malome yourselves and your ohana. Take care and we will be in touch soon. This brings us to an adjournment at nine forty-seven PM. We wish you guys well, be safe. Uh and prepare for the upcoming storms, gang. Don't take it lightly. There's two on its way. Okay, be makahaala and be makoko for that. With that being said, mahalo, Nunuikako, and we'll be in touch. Au au.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Lyndon, don't delete the chat yet.